All right, it's 6:30. Yep. Perfect. I can't start video, though.
I can't either.
Lita, were you able to hear us? We can't start video. There we go. Okay. Okay, so I am going to call to order the City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 3, 2022. Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Kristi Malchow.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kayleigh Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Moran.
Walking on the door, it looks like. Nope, sorry.
Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lam.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Madam City Clerk, we do have a quorum. Deputy Mayor, Clerk, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 5-0, the agenda is approved. Next, we will have public comment. And the public is now welcome to attend City Council meetings in person. And we have several members of the public here, which is great to see after a long hiatus. But they are also able to give comment virtually through Zoom. In accordance with the latest public health guidance, masks are recommended but not required for in-person attendance. Written public comment is accepted until 5:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to thecity@lhachey, which is L-H-A-C-H-E-Y, at samamish.us and thecitycouncil@citycouncil@samamish.us. For verbal public comment, you may provide up to three minutes of comment during the meeting by attending in person or at City Hall virtually through Zoom. Please join the meeting for Zoom if you are providing it virtually. That can be located under the Meeting Accessibility at the top of the agenda. During public comment, the clerk will ask attendees to press the Raise Hand button if you wish to give comment, and you'll dial *9 to raise your hand. When it is your turn to speak, the clerk will unmute you, and you'll be given the ability to turn on your webcam if desired. You'll be notified when you have 15 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments, after which you will be muted at the end of the three-minute period. I have our public comment sign-in sheet, and I have first Romero Valderrama. We'll do the in-person folks first, and then we'll circle back for those who are virtual.
Former Deputy Mayor Romero Valderrama, the costly and inconvenient truth. Why are we doing the EIS? Some say it is to help congestion in this city. However, the nature of congestion is well-known to all of our citizens to have been at the schools during school zone times, the drop-offs out there. If the council's intention was really to alleviate congestion, the EIS would be focused on collaborative solutions with the schools and our neighboring cities. Instead, what we are doing is looking at managing future congestions. In 2019, the council unanimously adopted the LOS at Intersections, then the strictest concurrency in the state. V-Over-C was then arbitrarily created and passed by a split council. Note, Kevin Jones, engineer, memos states at no point in the time did city staff or consultants recommend that the city council go beyond the intersection standards of September, important as it suffers from two glaring flaws. For VC to work, it must be estimates are accurate. Yet, as shown in the memo and in the charts I attached, you will see that it was always chosen to be erroneous, arbitrary, and segments are misstated from 48% to 75%. So this will set unrealistic expectations and are inconsistent with the Growth Management Act concurrency regulations. None of this was being contested by staff or the consultants. After spending millions on city lawyers, the Growth Management Hearing Board agreed with Jones. The final determination not only invalidated the volume-to-capacity portion of the ordinance as violating CIPA and GMA. The city then accepted that decision on November 13 and said the city decided not to continue its appeal of the invalidation and to instead accept the FDO. However, immediately following that, the council then went to create an EIS and comprehensive plan based on exactly what they promised the court not to do, based on V-Over-C. If you look no further than the March 22 balanced land use that you receive, Chapter 5, it has numerous callings out of the V-Over-C under it. The cost of this inappropriate arbitrary narrative raises the cost to taxpayers under alternative one that was given from $6.2 million to over $300 million on the 400. This is all fiscal madness and misleading new council members and our citizens of the true intentions and consequences. Yet they continued to waste the money and have raised taxes 12% in the last two years, though during a pandemic. There's no new road projects. You've slashed the overlay for roads by half. You've got no sidewalk safety that's been given.
Mr. Valderrama, I do need you to wrap up, please.
Thank you. Instead, what you now have is the first city deficits, new capital city shortfalls of millions, operational.
Mr. Valderrama, I need you to wrap up because we mute the people that are remote. I need to have everyone be the same, so please wrap up.
No plans to address them.
Thank you.
Please look at the consequences of these actions and misleading statements. Thank you.
Next, I have Mr. Eastman.
James Eastman, Samamish. Good to be back. I don't have anything funny or prepared today, but I did want to speak to this comp plan update that's in the packet. I'm not really quite sure. I've looked at the comp plans of past. I look at the one in the packet today, and I'm like, okay, $300,000 on hiring a consultant. That's fine and dandy, but if we get rid of the docket process and we merge it in with the comp plan update, what does that mean? Does that mean we just kind of go through the motions and maintain the status quo like we've done? I don't know, at least probably the last eight years. Or are we looking to provide some fixes? So depending on how you want to answer that question, how's that going to play out? You know, the staff and team will hold some public meetings. What if they did come up with a great idea? Well, there's a 3-3 split on the council, so are they going to want to bring that forward? I would say no. I think the staff right now, the morale is at all-time low. Their turnover rate's high, and rightfully so. They've had, I don't know how many different bosses in the past five or six years. It's a lot. So to actually bring something forward to you is very difficult, especially an opinion. And bringing it forth as a comp plan, that's really difficult to do. The docket process, that's easy for anybody to bring something forth. Mary's done a great job in the past. San Tonys, they went through, and that was a positive process. So I get the staff resources. I mean, God bless their souls. They are still here, working for the city through all this turmoil, and they're awesome. And their resources are low, so I get that, but we need momentum in our city. We need legislative processes that work. And the docket process is one of the few that helps us fix our own problems. The EIS option number four, that was something we've instituted. We've been working on it four years. I don't see a $250 million, probably $300 million with inflation, fix that magically cures the parkway, working to fix our concurrency problem. I don't think getting rid of two docket updates between now and the comp plan is going to help things. I think, or getting rid of them will help, but keeping them will help. It's easy. Just people can suggest stuff, and they get a vote, and they know right away whether you guys like it or you don't like it, whether the planning commission likes it or if they don't like it. We get rid of it. We just have a bunch of public meetings, and we say, maybe three on the council will support it, maybe three won't. And then in December of 2024, two and a half years from now, and I don't know, probably half the council's changed by that point anyways, we'll just put something forward and maintain the status quo. So I really would like you guys to discuss and think about things.
Thank you, Mr. Eastman. Madam City Clerk, do we have folks that are calling in remotely that would like to give public comment this evening?
For those who are attendees in Zoom, please raise your hand if you'd like to give public comment. I see two hands raised. I will transfer the first one.
Good evening, City Council. Sorry I'm not there. Carrie Bosworth here, Samamish resident. Tonight, I understand that you may decide on growth counts, but myself and others would like you to take additional time, which I believe you have. I'd like to offer a personal perspective, which I know is not unique to me. My dad moved here over two years ago. He just turned 84. I asked him to consider living in Samamish in an apartment, but he chose elsewhere. He lives in a 55-plus community, and he likes mingling with people his own age. He walks two to four miles a day in the parks and to the bank and to restaurants and more. I know we have many factors limiting our perspective on growth, school capacity, traffic, and tree retention, just to name a few. So let's talk numbers. My dad's building has 291 units. How much growth can we support if none of these residents are going to school? Half probably don't have vehicles, and the rest probably take fewer trips than younger residents. With a total of 330 residents, only 39 units have double occupancy. That facility doesn't have any services, so it would be great to have a memory care facility to move into next door or nearby. Same deal there. No students and fewer vehicles and trips per residence, if any. Yet we benefit from the income and revenue at various stages of these projects. Those two alone would make, would take up a fair amount of the 2000 you're currently considering. At my work, we're always responding to emergencies. It's a balance doing, planning, and fixing all at the same time. When we do get an extra little time, though, to focus on making thoughtful decisions, we totally take advantage of it. So you have some time. Use it to create solutions that maximize resources and opportunities for the city of Samamish. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
I'll now promote the next caller. Paul Stickney.
Good evening, City Council. Paul Stickney, Samamish. I'm going to chat a little bit about the two written comments I sent in earlier in the week. One is talking about the legacy and stewardship of housing in Samamish and attached something called irreducible indispensables that sent to the city back in 2016. And the information on that is as valid then as it is now. Housing is an emotional issue, and as I've said in the past, it's mostly because people's emotions and ideologies don't have sufficient information to tie into the two things that are really needed to figure out what's the best path forward for our city, which is sufficient information and contrasting consequences of different approaches to our future for land uses and growth to determine which approach has the best enrichments and value for our community as a whole. In order to, and then you can tie into something that we haven't been able to tie into here over 20 years, and that's the emotions of how you feel having that information as opposed to not having it. So obtain sufficient information, contrast all the consequences of different approaches to growth, then get community input from folks after they have all that data, and then make changes to the comprehensive plan. In my more recent comment that I sent in yesterday, it is time to gather information on three significant errors in the growth target number that is stated now at 2007. One topic has been corrected, which is sewer moratorium, but there are three topics that need additional consideration, and there's time. Our city counted down 1,000 housing units that were not built from 2006 to 2019, and that needs adjusting. Second, over the last 20 years, we've had internal targets in our comp plans to build close to 1,300 affordable housing units, and our city's built 65. And that's for about 1/7 of the households in our community that have incomes at 80% or less AMI. The largest topic is, what are the needs and wants of 6/7 of our community, of the households, to stay in our city over time as unplanned and planned changes happen in their lives? We do not have balanced, sustainable housing that our current comprehensive plan vision calls for. And that's my comment for this evening. I hope that you stall approving a final growth target and take the time to reassess those three errors and make appropriate changes. Okay.
Madam City Clerk, is there anyone else wishing to give comment remotely? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to give public comment this evening? Okay, and that will conclude our public comment for this evening. I would entertain a motion for approval of consent.
I motion, I motion to approve the consent agenda.
I think we got a, it's been moved already.
Oh.
If we can just get a second. I think, I think two.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 5-0, the consent calendar is passed. Okay, our next item is a proclamation for National Public Works Week, which is May 15 through the 21st, 2022. Is there a council member that is willing to read that proclamation this evening? Deputy Mayor? Okay, thank you.
National Public Works Week proclamation. Whereas the American Public Works Association acknowledges National Public Works Week each year in the third full week in May as a way to honor the tens of thousands of people in North America who provide and maintain the infrastructure and services collectively known as public works. And whereas the Samamish City Council has long recognized that the Samamish city staff perform public works that provides many essential services for a healthy, safe, and vibrant community through the management, design, community engagement, construction, and maintenance of vital infrastructure. And whereas components of the Public Works include, but are not limited to, clean drinking water distribution, safe and accessible, community parks and trails, motorized and non-motorized transportation infrastructure, reliable wastewater collection, efficient storm and surface water systems, protection of salmon habitat, urban forestry management and environmental habit corridors, timely waste, timely solid waste collection, fleet vehicle maintenance, field inspection and monitoring, maintenance and operations of said facilities. And whereas Public Works employees are difference makers who strive to be essential stewards of the city's infrastructure, and the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the effort, skill, and dedication of Public Works staff. And Public Works strives to promote a workforce and work environment that is free from harassment, discrimination, respects diverse viewpoints, cultures, and life experiences. And services provided by Public Works in our community are an integral part of our residents' everyday lives and creates a lasting impression on their health, safety, comfort, and sense of community. The mayor of the city of Samamish does hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through the 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week in the city of Samamish, and calls upon all residents and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our Public Works and to recognize the contributions which Public Works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We don't have any of our Public Works staff here, at least in council chambers, but I suspect there may be some hanging on the line as attendees, so just wanted to say thank you for all of our Public Works staff. We don't have a proclamation for it, but this week happens to be Municipal Clerks Week, so I want to at least recognize the clerks that we have here, present at City Hall, and thank you for the work that you do. We do have another proclamation, which is Affordable Housing Week. Is there a council member that's willing to read that? Councilmember Lam, thank you.
Proclamation Affordable Housing Week, May 8 through the 14th, 2022. Whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities that provide opportunity. And whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, defines affordable housing as, quote-unquote, "as housing on which the occupant is paying no less, paying no more than 30% of gross income of housing, including utilities," unquote. And whereas studies have found that each $100 increase in median rent results in a 15% increase in homelessness in metro areas and a 39% increase in homelessness in nearby suburbs and rural areas. And whereas there are, there were 47 Lake Washington School District and 39 Issaquah School District students identified as homeless during 2018-19 school year by the Lake Washington and Issaquah School Districts. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has exacerbated many existing financial constraints for low and moderate income households. And whereas the CDC recognizes safe, healthy, and affordable housing within communities of opportunities as key social determinants of health. And whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and the community as a whole. And whereas the need for affordable homes across King County prior to the COVID-19 pandemic and the number of people experiencing homelessness had remained at crisis levels. And whereas United to raise public awareness, people, organizations, and communities throughout King County are participating in local Affordable Housing Week activities to elevate the critical need to create healthy communities and ample affordable housing. And whereas the city of Samamish endorses the goals, objectives, and purposes of Affordable Housing Week, and in doing so firmly recommits itself to ensuring that our community's recovery from the crisis at hand is equitable and that all people in Samamish live with dignity in a safe, healthy, and affordable homes. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Samamish does hereby proclaim the week of May 8 through the 14th, 2022, as Affordable Housing Week.
Thank you, Councilmember Lam. Our next item of business is a presentation. This is reviewing the proposed 2022-2023 Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulation Amendment process. We have David Pyle and Miriam Leitner.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. David Pyle, Department of Community Development. I am here tonight with Miriam Leitner, who's joined us, and we will be providing an overview of the proposed process for update of the comprehensive plan by way of the docket. Turn it over to Miriam Leitner for a brief presentation and a discussion with the council.
Thank you, David. Give me one moment just to pull up my screen. Okay, can everybody see that all right? Perfect. Okay, so we wanted to spend a little bit of time tonight discussing the annual docketing process, which allows people to submit docket requests to amend the city's comprehensive plan or development regulations, and how this annual process will operate over the next few years as we also work on the 2024 periodic update of the comprehensive plan. So tonight, we're not asking for any direction from council. We just wanted to bring you up to speed on how we'll be handling the annual docket process during the periodic update. Over the next few years, as you can see, the city will be overseeing two processes that impact the comprehensive plan. So the first of that process is the periodic update, which is an in-depth review, updating our existing comprehensive plan and our development regulations to ensure that they're up to date with changes to the Growth Management Act and responsive to changes in land use and population growth. The other process is our annual docketing process, which is guided by Title 24A of the Samamish municipal code. Title 24A requires the city to provide an annual docketing process to amend the text of the comprehensive plan or the development regulations or to change the future land use map zoning designation for a property or a small group of properties. The annual docket is open to the public as well as to city staff. Because these two processes will be happening concurrently, we're going to be in an interesting situation for the next couple of years. The annual docket requests will be proposing changes to the city's 2015 comprehensive plan, and then at the same time, the city will be looking to identify amendments to update the 2015 comprehensive plan, which will ultimately create the city's 2024 comprehensive plan. So much of our budget, staff capacity, and work plan over the next few years will be tied up in the periodic update, as well as work on other large ongoing projects like the Housing Action Plan Grant and the implementation of the Urban Forest Management Plan. For the 2022 docket, we believe that the timing of the docket and the sculpting of the periodic update should align so that we can allow for the possibility of integrating docket items into the scope for the periodic update. And we encourage council to do this as much as possible to help create some efficiencies. For 2023 and 2024 dockets, we're going to be further along in the periodic update process. And that means that the integration of docket items in those years could impact the periodic update timeline and also require additional budget outside of what's been approved for the periodic update. At the same time, staff are going to have limited capacity, as I mentioned, to complete full reviews of docketed items just due to the work plan and the other items that we have. We will continue to offer the annual docketing process, but we're also going to be putting out communications to encourage the public to take their amendments through the public participation process or the periodic update. We want people to note their issues and their concerns with the 2015 comprehensive plan early on in the public participation process so that those concerns can be integrated directly into the scope of the periodic update. We'd also like to suggest as a future work plan item an update of Title 24A so that our code allows for a pause in the annual docketing process during the periodic update process. And in the future, this would help address a lot of the issues that I just highlighted tonight, but also create a more straightforward process for the public and for staff to administer. So that is all I have, and I'm happy to open things up for questions now or comments. Thank you.
So council, even though most of us are here, we're still going to use that raise hand feature via Zoom. So if you have questions, please use that, please. I have no hands.
Mayor, if I could add one thing to Miriam's presentation?
Absolutely.
That is, we did add this topic as a.
I think it's up here. David, it's not you. Okay.
We did add this topic to the most recent King County Planning Directors meeting. We wanted to understand what other cities were doing. They're, we're all faced with this in the county, a part of our comp plan updates. And it was fairly widespread how they were handling it. Those that had the ability to completely suspend the docket process based on what their codes said were doing so. Some were choosing to simply integrate comments received and requests for docket proposals into their comprehensive plan periodic update process. And others, like Samamish, were looking at simply maintaining an inventory of those requests received, as Miriam outlined, and processing it in that manner. So given the language in our comp plan, we feel this is the best action going forward. So given the language in our comp plan, we feel this is the best action going forward, and we're hopeful to still be responsive to citizen needs while, at the same time, being able to dedicate the time necessary to our comp plan update, which really is, for our department at least, and I think some other departments as well, one of our most pressing projects coming up. It's at our front doorstep, and we're about to embark on a fairly significant process here at the city with our comp plan update.
Thank you for that clarification, David. Councilmember Howe?
This may be an odd question, but have we ever done a workshop to help the public understand how to use the docketing process efficiently?
That's a really good question. We haven't done a workshop. We did do a lot of outreach and a revamping of our webpage to try to make it easier. We also added a text amendment guidance component so that people could submit their ideas, and then we can help them refine that to try to bridge that gap a little bit more.
I almost wonder, given that we do have a couple of residents who are quite gifted at this, I wonder if there isn't an opportunity here. And again, it increases engagement, and it may, I would like to think, decrease workload for staff if residents do a good job and back up their work, you know, with research and so forth. So that's just a thought, but I was trying to figure out if we've done this. Yeah.
Thank you.
So I don't have any more hands up, but I did want to get just a little bit more clarification since our title requires that we provide an annual docket. Can we get a little bit more descriptive? Like, does it require that we actually docket items and go through the traditional process that we would, or that we just accept requests for docketed items and then consider them as part of the periodic update? It looks, I mean, that's staff's suggestion is to do that, so I'm assuming it's congruent with code, but what exactly does Title 24A state as far as our annual docket process?
Title 24A does require that they go through legislative review with the public hearing with the planning commission, as well as with city council. So I think we would have to go through that full process, but I also think that as part of that, similar to what we did when we were looking at, like, the Phase II development regulation updates or the urban forest management plans, staff can highlight items that might integrate nicely into the periodic update for council consideration of that.
Okay, that helps in terms of understanding how we're going to receive their docket requests and how we could choose to act. It sounds like we could choose then to go through the traditional process if we so choose or do what we did with, like you said, with the urban forestry management plan, and then consider those as part of the periodic update. Correct? Okay, perfect. I think we got a few more questions now. Deputy Mayor Clark?
Yeah, just looking at the website, I assume there's a way if somebody cannot access or there's, you know, help with accessibility or a phone number to get help to do those requests?
Yeah, there should be.
Because you said you want to revamp it to the website?
Yeah, we are going to be redoing it. Once we have our, well, we now have our consultant for the larger periodic update, so we'll be moving that forward. And as they flesh out the public participation plan, we'll then update the docketing page to kind of cross-reference that and encourage folks to go that route as well. But yeah, there should be a staff contact on that page that people can contact for help.
Cool.
We also did try to make the docket request form fairly easy and not a lot of work. I think the second half of it, submitting the actual amendment application, has a lot more elements that are required by the comprehensive plan currently, and that's where it gets a little technically more challenging, where people need more support typically.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Trean?
So Miriam, if I heard you correctly, you said that it might be a good idea to pause the annual docket during the periodic update, which happens either every eight or maybe every 10 years. So would, is that, is that true? Is that what you want to, would be a good idea? You think that staff thinks that's a good idea?
I absolutely think it's a good idea. I think, unfortunately, the ship has kind of sailed at this point for this round, but for our next 10 years out, I do think it's a good item to consider. I think, and I feel like I can say this because I was responsible for working on Title 24A, there's some other sections that we think could be cleaned up and enhanced and clarified a little bit as well. So I think just a little reevaluation of Title 24A in the future work plan would be good.
So my request then would be to the city manager, if you could put that down as something that we'd like to look at as far as a policy that we would need to bring forward to the council to have a pause in the annual docket request during the periodic update, and then, as Miriam just stated, the cleaning up of Title 24A. We might have to look at that in the next retreat as a work plan item and how that would fit into the work plan schedule, so we stay ahead of the, ahead of the game there. Appreciate it. Back to you, Mayor.
Council, are there any more questions? Comments? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So David and Miriam? Oh. Councilmember Moran, do you have? Yeah, we're using the raise hand feature. Yeah. Councilmember Moran, did you have a question, comment? Okay.
Miriam, I was wondering if one of the big things on the internet is that you can, you can click and find out how to do just about anything. So the question being, if we couldn't just quickly put something on the internet on how to fill in a docket form. It would seem to me that if it were me, I would want to learn from staff how to fill in this docket form. If I were a, you know, working for a developer or something, and I was told, hey, go get a form and get it filled out and get it to me this afternoon, I would want to know from somebody from staff if I was having an issue, how was it done? So would it be possible to get a how-to fill in a docket form, you know, put on the internet with an access from our website, quickly done and attached someplace? I mean, that would seem to me like the obvious answer.
Yeah, absolutely, and it's actually an interesting timed question. So right now, we have been using an online form for the past few years that people just answer yes, no, yes, no, and then it takes it through. And because we had some updates to the fees, we're now moving our forms onto mybuildingpermit.com, so they're in line with all of our other application forms. So we're just finalizing those forms now, so it's a really good opportunity for us. We could record some little videos on how to register, do all of that, and we can post that onto the annual docket website once that's done.
Excellent. Thank you.
If I could add one thing to that, I just want to give credit to Miriam for really transforming the docket process. In the time I've worked with her in the past three years here, she's really taken it on and changed how we handle inquiries, processing. We've worked really closely with customers like Mary Whitaker, who I consider to be a policy entrepreneur, and she has really also changed in how she's filling out forms and presenting her information, and I think it's a result of the work that Miriam has done, really trying to coach people and be available and accessible in order to ensure that there's open access for people filing docket requests.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Miriam.
Thank you both to David and Miriam for your work on this. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Council, our next item is on school concurrency code amendments, and so David is going to hang on with us, and we're going to add Lindsay Osbold.
Great. While Lindsay is being promoted, this is a topic that has been in front of the council a few times in the past two years, and we are now continuing our conversation on that. There is no ask of the council tonight in terms of taking action. This is more of a study session, and staff are hoping to get some feedback from the council as to what our next step should be and what the direction should be going forward. I do see that Lindsay has joined us. I'll turn it over to Lindsay for a brief presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Let me share my screen. Hopefully, you all can see that. Good evening, council, mayor. Lindsay Channing here. I did recently change my name, but this evening, we're here to talk about school concurrency. This is the first touch with council in a formal setting on potential concurrency changes. So this evening, we've mapped out the agenda. We're going to do a brief overview of the process and proposed changes, a discussion around what Planning Commission's recommendation, what their process looked like, and then a question and answer segment, and David will be joining me back later in the presentation as we get into more of the question and answer portion. So as I mentioned at the opening this evening, we are wanting to start the formal discussion with council regarding the repeal of certain code sections within the Samamish Unified Development Code that pertain to school concurrency requirements. These are detailed and redlined in Exhibit 1 of the Agenda Packet for your review and consideration as we move through this process. The intent behind moving forward with repealing certain code sections is to lessen city's legal risk around making school concurrency determinations and also to continue working diligently with the school districts and the community at large to ensure that districts and students' needs are met from a school's capacity standpoint. There's a detailed memo from past legal counsel and also was reviewed by our current legal representation, and that's also attached as Exhibit 2 to this evening's Agenda Packet. And then Planning Commission's recommended draft code amendments occurred on March 17th of this year. That evening, they did conduct a public hearing and deliberate on the matter. Their formal recommendation and signed letter is included as Exhibit 4 in the packet, and we did receive one public comment prior to the public hearing held by Planning Commission on March 17th, and that is included as Exhibit 3. So for a brief background on how we got here, school concurrency has been a topic of conversation for a number of years in recent history with the city, and council discussed this and gave initial direction in late 2020 and then again in early 2021 regarding potential amendments to these code sections to align staff's review with the code. So as staff is reviewing various development applications, how, how are they being consistent? How is staff being consistent with the code sections as written? Staff did a detailed and thorough review of code and how the process was being handled, and we presented two options to this council on February 8th of this year. At the end of that presentation, council did give direction to staff to move forward with one of those options, and that option was to move forward with the legislative process of repealing Samamish Unified Development Code 2106040, sections I, J, and L, and then also SDC 2109020T4, which is Hearing Examiner Considerations Regarding School Concurrenty in favor of enhancing the information sharing and the process that staff conducts while working with the city's school districts with collaborative code amendments. And then also, the second part of that was to facilitate code amendments in the future that will help ensure appropriate school improvements are made. Those types of things could be expedited permit processing, exceptions and exemptions for certain actions that school districts may need to take, and then also some more prescriptive requirements for facility standards. So we thought we'd put together a flowchart for council and the community to see how we've already begun enhancing our engagement with the school districts. So this flowchart is intended to show from the time that the applicant has a proposed project to project completion. This could take anywhere from one to roughly three years, depending on the size of the project, the feedback that we get from the community, staff review, other jurisdictional review as well. So applicant project proposal starts the process. They're required to do a pre-application conference. Staff is now sending an informational notice to the school district, letting them know that they're invited to participate in this pre-application conference. If they so choose, they also are receiving the project proposal that the applicant submits for this pre-application conference. Once the pre-application conference is completed, then the application is submitted by the applicant or developer. Staff reviews that. At the time that staff is able to deem that application complete, staff is then taking the questionnaire that we have, which is a Safe Routes to School questionnaire, and sending that to the appropriate school district or districts in this case, depending on where the proposal falls within city boundaries. As I'm sure council's aware, we have three school districts within city limits. So depending on which school district this project covers, they will receive a Safe Routes to School questionnaire. We ask that they fill that out, and we give them a timeframe to return that information, which is two weeks from the date that we send that questionnaire out. The school districts are currently filling out this form. It has gone well. We've used it on at least one, if not a couple, of projects now since we've updated this questionnaire. And then, once we receive this questionnaire back, we will issue the notice of application, which starts the comment period, and this is the standard process for development review at the land use stage. And so this could include SEPA notices as well, depending on the complexity of the project. And this notice is sent to our normal contact list. The public at large is notified through various means of notification, and that includes the school districts, and they are able to submit any additional comments or concerns that they may have during this comment period as well. And then the comment period is completed, and the project is continued to be reviewed against the comments received back. This is a portion in the review process that can cycle through a handful of times. Sometimes, things come up that weren't anticipated or weren't caught early on either by developer or other agencies and requires the applicant to make changes or amendments to their application. They would then resubmit that, and we would cycle through this process, potentially, again, depending on the extent of those proposed changes that had to occur. Once we get through that and the revision review is complete, we're able to move forward with our either recommendation or decision, depending on the process. Once the application is granted approval, the school district would receive an informational notice, letting them know that the project was approved, and this portion of the project would be complete. So that is the more detailed. This always occurred, school districts being able to participate in the comment period. The school districts did have, for a number of years now, received a Safe Routes to School questionnaire. That questionnaire has just been enhanced. This is an earlier notification process that we're now doing with the school districts to try and get them engaged as soon as possible. Other engagement points that we have with the school district is an annual district meeting that we, as a city, do participate in. This used to be the countywide planning policy PF 19A. That has now changed to PF 22. It's a biannual meeting between the city and school districts. I just wanted to point that out, that same, same meeting, just it has a different name now. We also have periodic informational meetings with district staff as needed. We also do various meetings regarding policy and bond measure efforts that a school district may be working on and how that correlates with our jurisdiction as the city. And then we do also have city staff that participates in various advisory committees. One of those, for instance, is a facilities advisory committee. We also have some other tools that we can utilize for school concurrency, that being our SEPA rules that we have in Samamish Unified Development Code. It's found in 2109. As long as the project does not meet a categorical exemption, then it would need to go through a SEPA review process. If it is identified that there's inadequate capacity during that SEPA review for the larger-scale projects, we could choose to issue additional mitigation measures through the SEPA process. So that would mean to issue, instead of a SEPA determination of nonsignificance, we could, for instance, issue a SEPA mitigated determination of nonsignificance, so add an additional condition that's not already... an additional condition that's not already covered by code. Or if it's very significant, you could potentially get to the stage of a determination of significance and into an EIS, environmental impact statement. Also, there's Chapter 19711 of WAC, specifically WAC 197114442, little i, 2. This is the SEPA rules section of state WAC, and it requires that school capacity be considered through the SEPA review process, as schools are considered an element of the environment and their impacts need to be considered. So when applicable, meaning there's no SEPA exemption, they would fall under that review as well. And then lastly, there's also Revised Code of Washington, Chapter 5817, which is the Platte subdivision and dedications chapter, specifically 5817060 and 110, which requires that short plats and subdivisions be evaluated to ensure appropriate provisions are made for schools, playgrounds, school grounds, et cetera, and that there are available features that assure safe walking conditions for students who only walk to and from school. So as you can see, there's a number of tools that we have in our tool belt to work with the school districts collectively to ensure the student and district needs are being met. To go into a little bit more detail around SEPA, the SEPA review results, if they're identified as being minor shortages of classroom space, for example, that is one way where we might issue a SEPA mitigation determination of nonsignificance. So again, adding a condition to our SEPA determinations, this might include a phasing schedule as far as how the development is created, saying, you know, only a certain number of homes can be built until a certain checkmark is reached for the district, things of that nature. Also, it would enhance coordination between the develop, could require enhanced coordination towards, between the developer and school districts to implement flexible measures as far as school capacity. And then there could also be a condition around financial contributions to school improvements by the developer. SEPA mitigation of nonsignificance timeline is usually around nine months, and the appeal of this type of SEPA determination is local, and that's made to our hearing examiner. Now, if the review results in identifying a major shortage of classroom space, for example, this is where we would get into that determination of significance, which would require an environmental impact statement. This would require study of reasonable alternatives, could, would have a phasing plan for the development, financial contribution by the developer would almost always be a requirement under this type of scenario, and it most likely would require changes to the design of the project to reduce density in many cases. The standard timeframe for conducting an environmental impact statement, this is now just the SEPA portion of the overall project review stage, is 18 months to two years. And this, again, would have a local appeal to our hearing examiner. So with that background and what tools we do have in the toolbox, Planning Commission held the public hearing, and they recommended on March 17th, with a vote of five to zero, that City Council approved the proposed changes to SDC 21060040 and 2109020 as presented in Exhibit 1 of the Agenda Bill. So as I mentioned, we did have that Planning Commission work session and public hearing on March 17th. We have followed the appropriate legislative review process and notified Department of Commerce and conducted the non-project SEPA process. So on March 28th, we notified Department of Commerce for our 60-day notice requirement. April 18th, we issued a SEPA determination of nonsignificance on this matter. And on May 2nd, that comment period for the DNS ended, and we did not receive any comments in regards to our SEPA determination on this legislative code change proposal. We are at the May 3 presentation this evening, and then we have one more public touch point and review session around code changes, which is June 7th for the City Council public hearing and your deliberations and potential decision at that time. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Director Pyle to move forward through the questions portion of the presentation, and then we will have a question and answer at the end. Thank you. David?
Great, thank you, Lindsay. So mayor members of the council, we did receive some questions on this, and we wanted to walk through those on a Q and A format and then opened it up to dialogue with the council. The first question was, what is the risk in keeping the existing code language as is? And our response to that is, school districts would likely certify capacity on the whole of the district based on interim solutions, such as reducing specialized spaces, moving district programs, increasing portable classrooms, and changing school attendance boundaries. The issue here is that the way our school concurrency rules are currently drafted is concurrency is based on the district as a whole. So when we see development come in in a certain geographic area, we might be looking at the capacity of the schools that will be servicing the development. However, the district is basing its classroom capacity on the district as a whole because they see that they have flexible measures within their district, and it is their responsibility to manage their classroom spaces accordingly. So what issue we have there is that the district would likely never say that we have a classroom shortage because they are reporting as part of their capital facilities plans that they do have adequate classroom space when including flexible measures. The other is that revisions to the city and school district in our local agreement indemnifying the school district from any liability associated with delay damages or takings claims by the developer would be necessary. The school districts have indicated to us that they really don't want us to be in the business of determining whether or not there is adequate classroom space in their schools, and they don't want us to be delaying or denying development based on our read of their capital facilities plans, thereby putting them at risk of a takings claim or delay damages claim with the developer. I haven't seen this unfold personally, so I don't know the real risk there. I'm simply conveying the risk that we've heard and what we've heard the school districts relay to us.
I'm sorry, can we ask questions as we go through the questions? Because this was my question, so appreciate you tackling it. I do still have continued questions because I think maybe it's just a misunderstanding on my part on process. So I understand that the districts would likely certify capacity. And the question I have is, are we currently determining right now or have been in the past, because this code has been on our books since incorporation? Have we ever determined the capacity in the school districts, or have we allowed them during this process that plays in when a developer comes in with an application to just have a dialogue back and forth? What normally transpires?
It's a great question. So since I've been here, since my arrival in November of 2015, initially, my observation is that the city had not been, it had not historically been doing school concurrency determinations. So that's a simple fact, just reading back through the records, looking at Platte decisions. So in making, becoming aware of this and in looking at projects that have come through, we've started to apply it as directed by the council, apply it as it's written, see how it works, try and fine tune it. And we recently have run one through from beginning to end, which was the Brownstone West preliminary subdivision. We recently received that decision yesterday, and as part of that decision, we did include a form on school capacity, send it to the district. The district responded, there is adequate capacity. The measures would be flexible measures as previously outlined, and that was routed to the hearing examiner. It was raised on public comment as part of the hearing, that there was concern about how the process works and about whether or not there was adequate school capacity. The hearing examiner did, in the final ruling, make a statement that if a school district has a capital facilities plan, which has been approved, and if school impact fees have been assessed under the city's impact fee program, then a proposed development is considered concurrent. So the statement that's being made there is that so long as the city has on file a capital facilities plan from the district, then there is no possible way that the development will be seen as not concurrent with school capacity. The point of conversation that the city has, an opportunity for conversation with the district, is the point of receipt of the school district's capital facilities plan. If we disagree with the rate of forecasted development, we could then reject that capital facilities plan and not adopt it. However, that might impair adjustment of our impact fees. So it's a complicated issue, and really, it stems from the, did the district get the rate of development right in its capital facilities plan? And is it forecasting the need for school space properly? So what we're saying here is that it's, it may not be the city's role to be taking that on. We could hire a consultant at the point of receiving that, they could analyze that if you wanted to. There are many options we have that don't require us making a finding of school concurrency.
Okay. So, you know, it's interesting you bring up, you know, denying their capital facilities plans, probably not something we would ever do, right? But they're looking historically at student generation rates in order to come up with what their future forecasting will be, which is tied to the impact fee and how they calculate that. So it would be hard to challenge a capital facilities plan that is truly based on historical fact, right? But it doesn't always translate into correct assumptions into the future, right? I mean, if there's a large development that comes in and there's a ton of kids, then they may have under projected. However, I totally understand that the districts are going to, because they're looking at it from a district-wide basis, and of course, none of the school districts that are here are exclusive to SMAMISH, right? They cover other municipalities and jurisdictions. But I guess I'm still not really understanding the risk in keeping code. And as I did research over the weekend, and I think this is where some of my questions were generated from, King County has this almost exact language on their books as code. So does the city of Kenmore. And so, and I think, I think if I can understand the differences, it's just kind of been in code but stale and not necessarily being applied, if that's fair. And I don't know if King County or the city of Kenmore is applying theirs, but...
Great question. So since you raised the issue, we were able to get ahold of the city of Kenmore. They're doing some great work in Kenmore, they've had a lot of growth, some fairly large multifamily developments in the hundreds of units. And they have a mirror, as you say, a mirror copy of our current code. And the comment from the senior planner who I talked to, who had been there for 12 years, was that in her 12 years, they had never issued a school concurrency determination. And ironically, this was one of the top code amendments that they were looking at making in their upcoming work year to delete this section from their code.
Okay. So I wonder if King County is considering that, too. Their code is very close, but I'm assuming both Kenmore and SMAMISH inherited King County code and then maybe did some small tweaks because we define short platt a little differently. Kenmore and us, for less, the county does not define it.
So for the county, the difference is that it's a rural setting, and school resources are different in the county setting. And so seeing a cluster development that might come through in the county on an off chance that it happens, there could be a far greater impact to those school resources because of the rural setting of the county. So I, we also note that Watcom County has a school concurrency. There were some others that we found that were county. The unique one that's a parallel to us was Kenmore, which was identified. Thank you for that. We hadn't found that in our research, we apologize for that. But it was one of the King County core cities that does have a similar rule to what we have, or identical, actually.
Yep, okay. We've got another question. Councilmember Moran.
Okay, I want to go back to the very first topic. I thought we were going to do them at the end, but as long as we're going along the way. So the question was whether or not the district was going to say whether or not they had space and whether it was for us to say whether they had space and that sort of thing. But if we're in a position where we're saying, or the district is saying that they have space in their schools up here, and we see that they don't, and they're saying, yes, we do, then we're not asking the right questions. So to me, it's a matter of, because I work in those schools, I know where the space is. And if we're using art room closets as space, there's no space. So we need to be asking the right questions. And so if we can't get to a place where we're asking the right questions and asking the questions of, maybe the question isn't, hey, is the room in your school? Maybe the question is, is the subdivision that's coming in going to displace kids from that school? That's really what the question is. Is your subdivision coming in going to cause kids that are going to that school to have to leave? That's really the question we're getting at. And it shouldn't be optional for them to have to send that form back. It's like going to get a permit for water. They should have to send the form back. I mean, this is just really, this is really a hot button for me because I work in the schools. And so the idea that, well, we sent it in and we've gotten some feedback from them, no. These kids, you know, I have watched my kids go all the way through high school in these schools, and these portables are still there. No, I would rather stick with what we have under the chance that the last superintendent understood that they were getting the number counts wrong. And I'd rather stick with what we have in the hopes that we're going to get it right than limit ourselves to something that is not right and eliminate the chance of fixing it.
So I don't know that I have a solution for that problem in terms of what is, what the school district is considering appropriate classroom space or not. We could include a work plan item on the horizon, understanding that our work plan is fairly crowded and we'd have to bump something else or figure out a way to get it done, that would take on addressing the appropriateness of different types of spaces, limiting the number of portables, adding a requirement that new portables be plumbed, things like that, that would improve the quality of flexible space. We would have to work closely with the districts on those because the chances are they would, you know, want to have a say in that. And, but right now, the rule that we have on the books does not address that. And the rule we have on the books doesn't ask, is it the right classroom space? It simply says, you know, is the capital facilities plan on the books by the school district when including flexible space, is it saying there is adequate space across the district?
I understand that, and I agree with you. But neither does anything that we're going to. So I guess to me, what we had was a better shot at going someplace positive than what's being proposed.
Councilmember Lam.
So David, you mentioned Kenmore has the same concurrency code and that they're looking at repealing it. Are they repealing it for the same reason, paramount duty?
They are repealing it, as I understand it. So they're not in the process of repealing it. The message that was conveyed to me through a verbal conversation yesterday with their senior planner was that they haven't, in her time at the city, she's never seen a concurrency certificate issued for development. And it's a remnant from King County and that they are looking at possibly adding it to their work plan for the upcoming year for code revision because it's something that they see as a liability on their code. It's not something they use, yet it's in the code. So for it to be a silent section of the code or non-utilized section presents a liability because they're not following their code.
Okay. So they may have not just gotten to the point that we have where their city attorney has reviewed.
They indicated that they would, she indicated that she'll likely be watching this meeting tonight to learn more about what we're doing.
Okay. And so, just trying to get my history straight. So we have these codes because we inherited it from King County, and it's only recently that the city attorney has taken a look at whether or not the codes present a liability?
It's, so the genesis of this is in 2019. I think it's laid out in the staff report, the meeting date at least. The topic of school impact fees and school concurrency was raised when we introduced the adoption of the school district's capital facilities plans and adoption of the revised impact fee schedule. At that point in time, there was some discussion amongst the council about how do we measure school capacity and are we issuing school concurrency certificates? And that is the point in time where we looked fairly closely at our code and identified that we, in fact, have not been following the code as it is written. So I want to be clear about that. That's something that predates my time here. I've looked back quite a ways in determin, in decisions. It really depends on, there was a... It really depends on, there was a meeting we held on this topic that you could watch that goes into more detail about it. It really depends on how you read the code as to how it might be applied. One of the problems that we have is when we cobbled together the code that we inherited from King County, there are fragments that are included that, that, that might reference a section that doesn't exist or that might, might paint a linear path to something that you could do, but it's unclear which path to follow. So in all instances, we have used SEPA as the method to, to perform environmental review, which includes adequacy of school capacity. And that has been the primary tool that we have used. The hearing examiner has also made determinations of adequacy of public facilities as part of this subdivision requirements in his findings. However, he has not specifically made findings regarding school capacity.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Howe.
Hi, thank you. I'm just trying to make sure I understand this because if I get this correctly, the school district can just say, yeah, we have the capacity and it, because they technically do somewhere in the district. So is that where the concern over students being moved is coming from?
That is where the concern about our ability to make a finding of adequate school capacity is coming from because we, we might be looking at a specific school in a geographic area that is adjacent to the development. And we might be looking at their capital facilities plan, which says that that school is forecasted to have a shortfall of school capacity. However, the district has several tools in its toolkit where it can redistrict, it can add portables, it can, it can move, move other program space. And the district identifies those as tools that it will use in its capital facilities plan. And on average across the district, when including flexible space and other measures that could be taken by the district, the district identifies that there is adequate capacity.
Right. And I, I think that, I could see that, how, exactly how that argument would play out pretty much every time. What I am curious about when you say flexible space and, for example, you just used the idea of inserting plumbing as a requirement, you know, setting aside the fact it'd be tricky to try to pull off, does that make it a flexible space if you have plumbing? Or does it make it a change of definition to make it somehow more permanent?
I, well, currently the flexible space, space includes portables with no plumbing. But I think requiring that new flexible space added going forward, of course, this is something the districts will have feedback on because it changes, changes their cost dynamic.
Right.
But it, it would not necessarily make it permanent. It could be, it could be permitted in a way that would make it temporary. You could put a cap on the number of years. One other thing that's interesting is plumbing has changed quite a bit in the last decade. Now there are quite, quite many available grinder pumped scenarios or tanks and pumps and, and plumbing is different than it has been. We're seeing people add basement bathrooms where they never could because of gravity because the cost of plumbing, pumps and things like that has gone down so much.
Okay, that's actually very helpful. And Lindsay, I wish I could get to the, my question easier. I'm just a little foggy. But you were talking earlier about unless there were, there were, there was a influx, a huge influx of kids. And I'm trying to remember exactly where you were talking about that, where the numbers were way, would, could be way off.
SEPA.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
Yes, SEPA.
Lindsay, if you could go back to the SEPA slide?
Sure. So I wanted to know what, what is that number when it's significant? Because we talk about significant increase. What, what is significant? Is there a number?
It's, it's, there is no number by definition, no percentage by definition. It really is something that is discretionary on the part of the SEPA responsible official. So if we're seeing that, that the, the school district's capital facilities plan rate of development that's forecasted is not in line with a development that's coming on and it's going to throw the analysis in, you know, in, into a different outcome, well then we are probably going to raise a flag and say, hey, wait a minute, we have a development that wasn't anticipated to come in. Say for example, you had a, say for some reason, the, the land economics in Sammamish changed such that you had a 15 acre assembly of prior developed R6 come in for a re-division whereby they're able to triple the number of units because it was underdeveloped land historically. Well, that's not something we were forecasting. And that might fall into the second category here of a, of a major shortage and a major, a major deviation from the forecast model that they had had. And we would likely require a developer to do an EIS. And the EIS would then look at different alternatives about how school space could be provided, phasing. It could look at reduction of units. It could look at donation of space, funding of school space, those sorts of things.
Okay, that's very clear. Thank you for the help.
Sure.
So counsel, I think they were trying to go through questions that they received from council. I think we will have an opportunity at the end to ask additional questions or comments. So David.
Yeah, always happy to engage in questions. The next one, next slide, please, Lindsay. Are we creating more work for the city by taking this action? If Kenmore and King County have the same language and they are not changing, why are we? In this case, repealing this section does not create more weak, more work for the city as it streamlines the administrative process. Retention of the school concurrency requirements may result in a false perception of control by the city. Development will always be concurrent with school capacity with an approved school district capital facilities plan unless some of the, the assumptions that go into the plan are different, like we talked about with SEPA. The city will continue to work with the school districts and utilize the processes and procedures already in place to evaluate school capacity. This is what Lindsay outlined for you in the flow chart. And, and the answer to Kenmore is Kenmore is currently evaluating a school concurrency code and may consider having it repealed based on similar concerns raised by Sammamish. Next slide, please. Who is the right agency to determine school capacity? From our perspective, staff perspective, it's the school district. In determining school capacity, what should this be the city's role? Engagement with the school district to ensure appropriate understanding of the city's comprehensive plan, zoning and future land use map and forecasted rate of development. If you recall, some of you were on the council at the time that the Santoni rezone was being processed. We did receive a comment letter from the school district as part of the Santoni rezone where they stated concern that the rezoning of property in the town center might add density, might add potential density and thereby throw off their, their forecast because the, the future land use map has, had changed as a result of that. So we had to work with them on that to explain that there was a 2,000 unit cap in the town center and that wouldn't change the total number of units in the town center. It just redistributed where they might go geographically. Engagement with the school district during project review is really important to us. We're really wanting to work closely with them. My sense is, is that we had worked with them in the past, but not at the level we're working with them now. And this has raised a lot of awareness for staff and we now are training staff more thoroughly when we onboard staff. SEPA environmental review would be a really appropriate tool for evaluation of school capacity. And then we have, as Lindsay pointed out, the, the biannual meetings under the King County Countywide Planning Policy PF 22. Next slide, please. How do the school districts determine student enrollment projections? Each school district projects student enrollment differently. This is one of the challenges that we have. We have three districts. Kenmore, for example, has one district. Student enrollment projections are typically based on historic enrollment trends, county birth rates, economic and market factors, and development tracking. This is all information that is shared between the city and the school districts. Utilizes information shared by the city based on the rate of development, as I just said. Enrollment projections are completed separately by internal demographers and third-party consultants and compared for accuracy. This is an example of the Lake Washington School District. They do describe how they do this process as part of their capital facilities plans. Next slide, please. Can the city consider code amendments related to portables? We talked about this a little bit already. A portable is considered a relocatable facility. The council may direct staff to draft amendments to the development code to include expedited permit processing if we wanted to be responsive to the need for flexible space. Exceptions and exemptions for certain actions and prescriptive requirements for facility standards. As I said, further work on this topic would need to be added to the work plan. We would definitely like to take this on, however, simply it's a matter of priority. We have limited staff resources and we have a pretty full work plan. So just wanting to understand what the council's priorities are for us. Next slide, please. How long can a school utilize a portable as an interim solution to address capacity? We talked about this a little bit. Relocatable facilities accommodate enrollment increases for interim purposes until permanent classrooms are available. When permanent facilities become available, the relocatable facility is either removed from the school property or moved to another school property for an interim classroom. It's important to note that relocatable facilities are used as an elastic measure to ensure fiscal responsibility and not overbuilding brick and mortar facilities. The issue here is that census is always changing, populations are always changing. We sometimes see a major growth in school age children in a, in a community that results from a housing boom or, or a demographic change in that community. And that could change and wane over time. And what the school districts don't want to do is overbuild brick and mortar because the cost of construction and maintenance is quite high. That's why they use flexible space and portables. Next slide, please. Is a portable considered a temporary use? It's a relocatable facility, not considered temporary use. A relocatable facility is a factory-built structure approved under rebuilding permit. They also could be built and prefabbed if you wanted to. You could have them approved by Washington State Labor and Industries and it would be a very quick assembly to locate there if it was the right type of portable. It can be located on school property until the school district determines it is no longer needed. Next slide, please. I think that wraps it up. Yep, questions?
Okay, so let's just go to any general questions council members may have at this juncture. Councilmember Moran.
Well, I think it's interesting that portables aren't considered temporary. I think that ought to get out there because they always say, oh, no, that's temporary. I just think that's funny. My comment has to go with, I, I completely 100% agree that the majority of the decisions need to be that of the school district. But with that discretion comes obligation. And the obligation of the school district is not being addressed here because the obligation of the school district is being dumped onto the city in my, in my feeling. They are not answering the questions and we are not putting the questions to them, to be fair. So they are being able to kind of walk away and have us take the blame on, you know, the question of, hey, these kids are being displaced, these kids, you guys knew there was going to be kids coming in from that. So the city is always to blame. And really it is our fault because if we have, if we have done a good job with our policies, with our codes and policies, then we wouldn't be in this position. So to me, it's a matter of getting this right. And I'm going to say again, what we have in front of us doesn't quite do it. I just, I really feel that we need to make the, we need to make the school district responsible for answering the right questions. I understand that the school district's job, and it is their job, they have got to educate every student brought to them. And they will move students around. I have been on two of their committees and they're not pleasant committees because little Johnny is going to be educated and you're going to move students. And I have had the nasty letters given to me in my mailbox. I've had all that. I've had to be on those committees. And so I know what's going to happen, but it is their obligation to tell you ahead of time it's going to happen. Because when we have people that move to Sammamish for the schools and everything else, the city's got an obligation to make sure that our policies and our codes warn people upfront best we can of what's coming.
Deputy Mayor Clark.
Yeah. Thank you, Lindsay and David. I guess I'm kind of struggling to, I mean, I know we're not deciding on this tonight so we have a month. So if our past and current attorney has said, you know, this would be a good thing to remove potentially planning commission, voted unanimously, 5-0 to remove it. We don't oversee schools and what they do. If we're planning to, you know, appropriate growth targets, you know, informing our comprehensive plans, helping school districts be informed, why would we leave this in?
I, I, I don't know why you would. I feel like there are parallel tools. I think that the comments made by councilmember Moran, I fully understand those and my sympathies go out to those families that have been displaced. I have four children of my own and I would hate to see them be displaced and have to go to a different school as a result of somebody else moving in. I, I think that that is more addressed through our zoning code. And we have long talked about on, at the staff level, creation of a, of a, I'm trying to remember what the name of it is, the right type of district for, for a school to be located in and possibly creating a new zoning district as a result of a comp plan update. So if you were to set the policy direction right as part of the comp plan and you were to change the zoning code to allow for a municipal zone or something like that, that then could have parameters around what type of space is required for, to be proper school space? And, and, and how it works with regard to limitations on busing possibly or things like that that we'd have to work pretty closely with the district on, that would be the appropriate mechanism. Right now, the way the code is set up is it, it just doesn't do anything because the minute we have a capital facilities plan on record, so long as the, the school, or so long as the development is within the range of what is anticipated through the forecasting, then it's considered to be concurrent, consistent with what the hearing examiner just issued yesterday.
Okay.
So for me, from my perspective, it is a duplicative process and the way the code is currently drafted, it is unclear exactly what pathway you're supposed to follow, although it is clear that if you have a capital facilities plan and the, and the paradigm doesn't change, then you always will result in a finding of adequate capacity.
Yeah, and that was kind of me. I mean, this school concurrency looks a little squishy to me. SEPA does not, only because I used to be a responsible official, so that I understand. And then lastly, how often do they submit the capital facilities plan?
Annually.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
You'll, you'll get to see that here in a few months.
Great.
So just a few comments. And, you know, I appreciate the sentiments that councilmember Moran has brought forward. I think all of us on the city council have certainly heard comments from the community relative to concerns on school capacity. However, there are a few items of note. One, portables. I, I know I've talked to kids. They don't like to be in the portables. They're not as nice as functional classroom, brick and mortar space. But the districts do put those in, as David mentioned earlier, but then also it preserves their bond ratings. So I too have served on a bond feasibility committee through the Issaquah School District. And in their 2016 bond campaign, which was, I think, $535 million, a million dollars of that was portables. And they did it for enrollment projections, but then also a measure which, who could have foreseen a pandemic where there was a retraction in the number of students in the schools? But those kinds of things actually pay off for the districts and therefore the taxpayers who are paying off those bonds. So there is some rationale behind portables, although I understand it is a financial one, which doesn't really translate to a fourth grader. But that is why the districts do it. I think even if we left this code language in, and of course, the public will have an opportunity to engage with us at that public hearing that's going to transpire on June 7th. But I don't think that even if we held their feet to the fire on this, that the districts would ever walk in and tell us that they don't have room. We keep saying paramount duty, but I want to read what it states. "It is the paramount duty of the state to make ample provision for the education of all children residing within its borders without distinction or preference on account of race, color, caste, or sex," which means the districts will find a way to fit them in. They are never going to come to the conclusion that they are out of space. However, there's obviously, it sounds like the city still has the ability to deploy SEPA as a measure. And I think that catchall, I would hope that the districts would say if an application snuck through that they were not anticipating, that they would say, whoa, we do not have space for this. I, I would certainly hope that. I think there would still be mitigation that transpired. Development applications when they walk in the door does not equate to building the next day and then kids on the school bus the week after. It's years. So it does give the school districts time. I understand their schools are full. I, it looks like their enrollment numbers are all suppressed, however, given the pandemic. I anticipate those bouncing back. I think the district- I anticipate those bouncing back. I think the districts anticipate those bouncing back. But time will ultimately tell. But I think there is risk to the city in putting forward the school concurrency. And I understand the public's concerns relative to this, but council members have to mitigate risk to our taxpayers. And there is a system in place, and the districts are sovereign. And that is something that is also stated under this paramount duty, which is the school districts are a function of the state and derive sovereign authority from the state. So I don't know that even if we put the screws in this thing, that it would change any outcomes. All right, I don't have any more hands up unless, okay, Councilmember Trine.
So David, after that statement, then, I'm curious. One time, we follow the code, and the consequences was a hearing before John Gault, correct?
The hearing was the result of a subdivision application, correct?
Correct. And so we applied the code. And then, so what's the consequence then of that?
The consequence, there is no consequence. The cumulative effort that goes into it definitely was increased.
Meaning the cost to the city?
Cost to the city of processing the plat, which could be passed off to the applicant. That's correct.
Right, yeah, we can do that. It's part of the process. So I'm trying to weigh the risk. And if the risk is some time, is the consequence of the, also, would there also be an unintended consequence that the developer might, the product that is put on the ground would be a better result due to this kind of ruling that Gault provided?
No, it's a, it's a, the hearing examiner ruling at a type 3 action for a subdivision is really an audit of the staff's recommendation. So if the hearing examiner goes through the hearing process, hears from the public, reviews the staff work done, and makes a finding that the staff erred, or that there was a misrepresentation by the applicant, or that something doesn't add up, then the examiner has the choice of either remanding it back to staff or amending the decision to add something to clarify his finding.
I get it. So so if we keep the code as it's written, that's a problem. That's a liability, has, there's risk. If we, if we just remove it completely, what, what, what's the consequences of that? What, I'm like, I'm, okay, here's how I feel about it, and I don't know if this is true. So what I feel is I'm losing a tool, or you're losing a tool to use to help manage growth. So if that's the case, then I would rather have the tool. Now, do we need to rewrite the code so that the tool is more refined and does exactly what we want it to do? So here, so my question is, if I, if we just remove it completely, which is an option, is that, is that in a sense, does that have an unintended consequence that actually hurts us?
The consequence would be a misperception on the part of the community that we're in control, a misperception on the part of the community that there's opportunity to appeal a project based on the grounds of adequacy of school capacity, potential risk related to the city due to a delay damages claim or a, or a takings claim if we were to deny the school the school concurrency certificate, and the district said there was capacity, potentially could result in the district wanting us to amend our interlocal agreement with them, to indemnify them in the event that we did make a finding that there was not school capacity, and the district didn't want to be at the
That's if we keep, that's if we keep it, that's if we keep it in place.
If we keep it.
If we take it away.
If we take, if we take it away, then we would be utilizing parallel tools such as SEPA to make sure that there is no change in paradigm. We would be following the adoption of the, we would be able to first comment on adequacy of school capacity at the point where the district transmits to us their capital facilities plans. We would have opportunity to review those, and if we chose not to adopt those, we could do so. However, that would affect our ability to increase or change our impact fees. We would then rely on SEPA as a tool to evaluate adequacy of school capacity. We would also rely on subdivision requirements, which require a hearing in the event of a subdivision, where the hearing examiner would review adequacy of public facilities as he's done in the past.
Okay, I think you're making my point. This is a pretty complicated issue.
Our city attorney has, would like to make a comment.
Sure.
So Councilmember Trine, I'd like to take an attempt to answer your question because it seems like you're struggling with whether to keep the code language as it is now or repeal it as is being recommended. And I just wanted to emphasize a point that I do believe that David and Lindsay made already, which is there are already some parallel tools in the toolbox that are being utilized. And point in fact, historically, the city has not been relying on the code language and has not been actually requiring issuances of a certificate of concurrency from the schools. So that language has actually been sitting dormant in the Sammamish Municipal Code since incorporation in '99, frankly. I mean, it's been dormant there. So I understand it's somewhat of, it feels like on the horns of a dilemma to keep the code or not to keep the code. But the code has not been really being utilized. Instead, we've been utilizing, you know, these other tools, like what David said, that we will still continue to have, such as in the subdivision chapter of the RCW 5817, it talks about ensuring adequate provision of playgrounds, schools, and related facilities, also ensuring safe routes to schools, making sure that subdivision applications include sidewalks to schools, things like that. And then, of course, we've got the SEPA tool substantive SEPA powers. So that's a helpful tool. I think that
Yeah, but those have been there.
They have been there, and that's more what
The one time that, the one, sorry for interrupting, but the one time that we actually use the tool, we've done it once. So if you base your data on one time, and then it didn't work exactly right, then that means scrap the whole thing. So I would just challenge us as a council then. So it's not that I disagree with what you're saying. I actually agree with what you're saying. It's just that, because I know, I actually know that to be true. We haven't used, we haven't applied this code. That's, that's a mistake, so we need to rectify that. So really, it's not, to me, it was, I wasn't leaning towards either one, to either keep it or to reject it. I actually want to be a little more complex and a little more effective and say, what if, what if we were to rewrite it and eliminate, say, the action plan and make it specific to a school? Or make, or a cluster of schools, the feeder system, you know? So there's a lot of different ways to look at this. And so, right, I mean, I must, hi. I'm a school teacher, if you guys don't know that. So I've been in the system for a long time. So, so the reality is, is there may be a better solution of rewriting the code. So then at that point, if that's the case, Mr. Pyle, I know you guys are really busy for the next two years. So is this something else that we, I hate to say this, kick the can down the road, but is this something that we look at, okay, this is a work plan item, and are we willing to actually spend the money to give us something that has got teeth? So, and maybe the answer to that is no, so.
So David, can I ask a quick question? Because what I heard insinuated over here, and I'm not clear on, is that the hearing was triggered by school concurrency. Is that accurate or not?
No, the hearing was triggered as a matter of process. There is always a hearing required as part of a subdivision. It's a type 3 action, which culminates to a public hearing with the hearing examiner. And hearing examiner audits staff work and recommendation ultimately makes a decision. The decision was issued yesterday approving the Brownstone West subdivision.
Okay, so I think that's an important clarification, that when we applied the code, it didn't trigger a problem with school concurrency, correct?
Our finding is that the code was essentially moot because there are other processes in place, and because there is a, as the hearing examiner's finding also concludes, a approved capital facilities plan on file that indicated that, you know, as long as this, the development was in line with the forecasted development, and the school district had received information on the Brownstone West project back in, I think, 2019, quite some time ago. So they have had ample time to integrate that into their development forecasts in their annual rewriting of their capital facilities plans. So it was definitely consistent with their forecast modeling.
Okay, and I think that it's just an important distinction, that the application of the code didn't trigger the hearing. So one, one item I don't think we've touched on, and that's relative to the liability. The liability is not with the city and the district. It's with the applicant and a takings claim. Is that correct? So if we were to deny an application for school concurrency, we say, if we were to apply our existing code and say, sorry, you don't have room in your schools, the risk to the city is that the developer, the applicant, would say, that is, you are taking, it's a taking, it would be a takings claim. Is that the risk to the city?
So my understanding is that the developer or applicant could then say, well, the school has a paramount duty to provide school space to these children. There is space under state law, and therefore, you are taking away my right to develop my property. Or at best, could be, or, you know, in a different angle, could be a delay because there might be some time taken to work out that they might file an appeal to our denial of the concurrency certificate, which is allowed by code. Go to the hearing examiner, there'd be a process to get there. And that would account for a delay in their project. And delays in projects for developers equate to financial damages in most cases.
So this is a question then for our city attorney, is that if the city, if we kept the code and actually applied the code and triggered one of these instances where we said, no, sorry, there isn't room at the schools, we would likely be sued based on what David said on paramount duty, and is that even remotely a winnable case in court?
So I do think that there would be that high likelihood. I think we'd try to guard against that risk by saying, don't outright deny, instead, condition, right? And so we'd use conditions as a tool to just say, either you have to, you know, contribute money, contribute land, help fix the problem of not being able to have capacity. I think, following up on a comment made by Councilmember Trine about, you know, could we somehow revise or amend our code so that it was more school-specific? The challenge with that is, again, the way the state law is currently, it's looking at a district as a whole, not at a particular school. And so the district as a whole will, in almost every instance, certify that there is adequate capacity. And so we've got a lot of different practical challenges, and we try to manage our risk appropriately for that. But yes, it is possible that if we outright denied, which was your hypothetical, Mayor, then yes, that could invite a lawsuit that we would have a challenge prevailing upon.
Okay.
If I could add one more comment, is that another opportunity for the city to engage is in assisting schools in siting new schools and in providing for those expansions. So when we're confronted with a new school, that we, we find, we help the school find land, we help the school with other improvements that are needed, and partner with them to facilitate the addition of school space. And that that is something that is included in, trying to remember the exact county-wide planning policy. However, there is a county-wide planning policy that says that it strongly encourages cities to partner with schools to facilitate the siting and construction of new school space. So that, that is an approach we could take, and we could look at that as part of our comp plan update.
Okay, well, thank you. I don't see any more hands up. I think the reality of the situation is that it's just simply a bitter pill to swallow, that it's, it's something that we want to be able to get our fingers into and to assist with school capacity. But unfortunately, we are not the authority over the school districts. They have that as granted by the state of Washington, and they have a paramount duty to do that. And so I don't feel that there's probably a winning solution here that will ultimately cost our taxpayers in the end. And the schools will go in, and that's just kind of how it is, so. Are there any further comments? Oh, yes, we do have one more. Councilmember Moran.
Though I, I disagree with the comment that was just made because to me, to leave it without, to leave it the way it is and not take the time to notice that the two councilmembers here that work in the schools are against leaving it the way it is, should tell you that it's not ready, and it is not the direction that perhaps it should go. It tells me that it is worth the time to go back and look at why. I'm not saying that, and I happen to agree because it is the job of every school district to educate every child. And that will happen one way or the other. But it is also the obligation of the school districts to make sure that they inform these parents of what exactly is going to happen when you have larger developments come in, and when these kids are going to start attending these schools. And so that obligation, and that should be the obligation of the school district. That is not the obligation of the city. And that's where this is going to fall on. If we do not address this between our policy and our codes, and if we don't make them take responsibility for this, then it does become the responsibility of the city. And it's going, we're going to be the fall guys.
So I think we're wrapping up this topic. I, hopefully, to close this out, there is a public hearing, which affords the general public to come to council and give us comment, understanding kind of everything we've talked about here. So again, that's on June 7th. Thank you, Miriam, David.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll take a brief timeout here while Kelly Hildy joins us for the next topic. And I'll be timing out and in the background, and then I'll be rejoining you again for the fourth topic on the agenda.
All right, real quick, Council, do you guys want a break or not? Nope, okay, I'm going to step away for a minute, so Kelly's coming on.
Okay, here I am. Good evening, City Council. Thank you for your time tonight. We are going to be speaking on the Housing Action Plan. And Lindsay will be providing an update, as well as posing a question to City Council and following up on the statistically valid survey question posed at our last update. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Lindsay to take it away.
Great, thank you, Kelly. Again, thank you, Council. Let me share my screen with our next presentation. So we are here this evening to discuss the Housing Action Plan update. We have a fairly brief presentation for you this evening, and we do have a couple members of our staff present along with our consultant. Before I jump into that, the outline for this evening's presentation, I'll introduce our consultant team, at least our main consultant, have a brief outline of housing work that's been done to date in Sammamish, what the objective of the Housing Action Grant is, and then what the timeline and task looks like surrounding that. And then we'll move into data collection strategy, and end with the Public Engagement Plan overview and a brief discussion around survey topics and the options moving forward as to whether or not we do, excuse me, a statistically valid survey. So with that, Council did approve the contract with our consultant team at the beginning of March with CAI, Community Attributes, Inc. Elliot Weiss is our project manager, and he is here this evening with us on the screen. And he also will be giving the second half of this presentation this evening and available for questions at the end. A subconsultant is Makers, with the representative being Bob Benford. He is not here this evening. He will be seeing him later on in future interactions with staff, the public, and council, and Planning Commission as we work forward with the work plan. So for a very brief outline, we really started working on housing back in 2019. So for a very brief outline, we really started working on housing back in 2015 when we adopted our last comprehensive plan update, which included a housing element. This will be, again, evaluated in the 2024 update, which you heard about a little bit earlier this evening, that that periodic update is coming to the forefront with planning staff work in the near future. And then from 2017 to 2019, staff worked on Sammamish Homegrown, which was a housing strategy for the city. We also did Phase 1 of the Development Regulation Update in 2018 to 2019, and then the latest iteration, which created the Sammamish Unified Development Code, the SDC, was the Phase 2 Regulation Update from 2020 through 2021, and went into effect January 1st of this year. And then we also will begin Phase 3 of the Development Regulations Update this year leading into 2023. Something else that we've been an active participant in over the years is ARCH, which actually stands for Regional Coalition for Housing. ARCH is to help preserve and increase housing for low-to-moderate income households in Sammamish and the surrounding region. And we also are getting, although not as much support as originally thought, we are getting support and constant contact with ARCH as we work through this Housing Action The objective of the Housing Action Plan is to encourage additional affordable and market-rate housing in a variety of housing types at prices that are accessible to a broad range of incomes for our community and the region. We have a high-level graphic here showing you that there are four main tasks associated with the Housing Action Plan. This Housing Action Plan is anticipated to take roughly, you know, 14 to 18 months to adoption. We need to adopt it by June of 2023. So we are currently in the Housing Needs Assessment stage, and in the very beginning stages of the community and stakeholder engagement process, we'll then move into the actual drafting of the Housing Action Plan. And then beginning of the year of 2023 is when we'll begin the review and adoption process. For more detail regarding that, we have a number of public meetings we'll be conducting leading up to adoption of the Housing Action Plan. So of course, this evening, we've got the Outreach and Data Analysis Overview with you, Council, who will also be giving a similar presentation to Planning Commission here in a couple weeks on May 18th to give them this information as well. We then anticipate conducting a joint meeting with Planning Commission and City Council on September 20th to report back the results of the Housing Needs Assessment that's conducted over the summer. And then, once that information is analyzed and more research and development is done, we'll report back to City Council on December 6, giving an update on potential strategies moving forward into what the Housing Action Plan would look like, and would give a similar presentation to Planning Commission on December 8. We would then have a work session with Planning Commission, currently scheduled for March 2nd of 2023, to review the draft Housing Action Plan and anticipate having the public hearing regarding that draft plan with Planning Commission, the first meeting in April, so April 6th of 2023, where we would hope to receive a recommendation from Planning Commission to forward on to Council. That would then push us into the work session with City Council on May 9th, with an anticipated public hearing and public participation, and potential adoption on June 6th of 2023. So that's a brief overview of touchpoints with Planning Commission and City Council. From here, I'd like to turn it over to Elliot to continue the presentation, and then we will open it up for questions at the end. Elliot?
Thank you, Lindsay, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me. My name's Elliot Weiss. I'm a senior planner and project manager for Community Attributes. I've been with the company for almost 10 years now and have worked in Sammamish on a few different occasions over that span of time. So I'm very happy to be back here with you tonight. I wanted to give an overview, really, of the inputs to this project, and those inputs will vary at different points in the project. So Lindsay just gave a brief summary of the major tasks, two, which were color-coded in the same color, are the Housing Needs Assessment and Housing Action Plan. The Housing Needs Assessment is coming first. The Housing Action Plan is more of a strategic component, as the name implies, that builds on the findings that we uncover in the needs assessment. And while they both have elements of data analysis and community and stakeholder engagement, those elements might differ in those two different phases of the project. So for the Housing Needs Assessment, it's heavily data-driven at the beginning, using sources like the Census Bureau's American Community Survey, data from Washington OFM or ESD for population and employment figures, and other sources as well, Bureau of Labor Statistics, et cetera. We, as a matter of course, want to make sure that we're being transparent about the assumptions in the data, the liabilities in the data, if they exist, and that we're documenting the sourcing, where this data is coming from and how it should be interpreted. But then, to supplement that data collection, we would be looking for feedback from residents, from public officials, from city staff, from Sammamish workers. Part of that would be coming through a survey, which I'll speak to in more detail on the coming slides, but also other events, other outreach opportunities that have been detailed preliminarily in a draft Public Engagement Plan. As for the Housing Action Plan, when we pivot more towards the strategy development phase of this, where we're really looking at tactical interventions that city staff can pursue for implementation, things that tangibly would result in housing to meet the needs of current and future residents, we're going to be doing some detailed feasibility modeling that will rely on a market analysis, looking at market data, construction costs, housing costs, et cetera. We're going to be consulting with key stakeholders that might take the form of targeted interviews, and again, soliciting feedback all the while. Lindsay also showed a tentative meeting schedule, so we've got a number of touchpoints here with Planning Commission and with you all as a council, but the broader community as well will be invited to participate. So there are audiences that we are required to reach by virtue of the grant that the city has been awarded and which is funding this work. And those groups are on the left there, local realtors, builders, developers, residents, Sammamish workers, community groups, including nonprofit housing advocates, local religious groups, and social service providers. We don't intend that list to be exclusive, and we're certainly welcoming of opportunities to reach the community in broader forms. But what we wanted to do with the Public Engagement Plan, which again is a draft at this point, is to identify methods that could both cast that net widely and yet meet the requirements of your grant to reach all of these specific audiences. And so some of those tools might be a survey, individual or group interviews, focus group events featuring, you know, groups with common interests or areas of expertise, or some sort of community roundtable event that brings together folks who would benefit from sharing their perspectives, and then public meetings, either dedicated meetings solely to serve this project, or other meetings, or even events, meetings might be too narrow a term, where we can have a presence to either disseminate project information or solicit feedback on things that we've been developing as a project team. The survey is definitely going to be part of the Engagement Plan. It's sort of a non-negotiable element, because as I understand it, it was proposed as part of the city's grant application. So we are going to design a survey that helps us understand what housing needs are, again, for current and future residents of Sammamish. Part of that will be understanding who lives here now, what their plans might be for the future, who might wish to live here, or what challenges folks have had in securing housing in Sammamish, and then what their preferences are for housing units, say, by type or by size, number of bedrooms, price in terms of their ability to pay. All of these things are topics that might be fair game for this particular survey, where we're really on a fact-finding mission about the needs of residents and what Sammamish's housing stock currently exists. So how many units are available for renters versus owners? How many units are available below 2,000 square feet, or from 2,000 to 3,000, or 3,000 plus, or at three bedrooms, at four bedrooms, at five bedrooms, to meet the differing needs of different members of the community? We initially proposed an online survey that was included in our proposed scope of work as a consultant, and I think it aligned with what the city had submitted in the grant application. That would not meet, what I understand, was an interest or a potential interest of council in terms of statistical validity. Or I should say, it could, you know, depending on the way we disseminate the survey and the number of responses we get, if we got enough responses from a random or nearly random distribution, it may qualify as statistically valid. But if we were determined to obtain statistical validity, we would consider bringing on potentially another subconsultant, a specialist in research methodologies that include primary data collection, and that would entail additional costs. We've estimated those at about $20,000 above and beyond the amount that was allocated to this project, and we would then be able to cover the cost of distribution of mailers and things like that. We have addresses, as I understand it, so that's not an obstacle. We wouldn't have to purchase those in order to do mailers that are randomly distributed. But there would nonetheless be some additional cost with the statistically valid survey. So that's certainly something that we, as your consultant on this project, are happy to pursue for you. But, you know, I wanted to present these two options to see what was in council's interest, given the additional cost.
Yeah, thank you, Elliot. And with that, Elliot is correct that in our grant proposal that we submitted and then was thereby accepted by the state, by Commerce, we proposed doing an online survey. And so that falls in line with option one, which is also how CAI did their proposal when we asked for RFPs in regards to hiring a consultant to help us with this work. So if we took it that step further with the online statistically valid survey, there is this estimated additional cost of $20,000, which we would need sooner rather than later. We would need to get something before council for approval of that so that we can move forward and not delay the project, because we do have a requirement that the Housing Action Plan is adopted and finalized in June of 2023. So with that said, what we are asking of council this evening is which survey option you would like to proceed with for this project so that staff can, and the consultant team can move forward. So that concludes our presentation this evening. That draft Engagement Plan was included as Exhibit 1 with the agenda packet this evening, and then the contract for the grant was also included as Exhibit 2. Just for your reference, you have seen that document previously. But with that, we're here for question and answer. And I turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Howe?
Thank you. I think I may have been the instigator of looking for the statistically relevant information. And with that would be where I would definitely lean. I think this is a very important decision to make, and having good data is going to pay off for us in the long run. And the more general comment I'll make around this is that we do, I don't even know how many surveys we do of our population for different things with different contractors. I think we have to figure this part out. How can we leverage this work so that we are not going to the population with a drip here and a drop there, and talk to you, but I never talk to you? I mean, how do we do a best practice around surveys so we get the information we need when we need it? We've done enough of these now that I would like to think that we were experts, really good at it. But it's hard, and I appreciate it is hard. I do. I'm, you know, my direction on this is that, for heaven's sake, 20,000 is not that much money, let's do it. And is there a way that we can leverage this work for other surveys we already know that we're going to have to pay for? And try to find out from the people who have already done surveys for us in the past, what's worked and what hasn't, when they've tried to get, do significant outreach. And I'll give just a specific example of, we tried to go to homeowners associations to poll residents, because you'd think that that might be just an avenue that could pay off for us in the long run. I don't think we minded it. I don't think we created the behavior where people would even be used to seeing an email from the city via their homeowners association. But I think that's an opportunity. So we can't just hope that, working with the farmer's market, that we run into people that live here that are going to help us out with surveys. And I think that just having a methodical approach with a target in mind with a number, which is what we're going to get with something that's statistically relevant, could really pay off for us. Thank you.
Miriam?
I just wanted to respond to that, that we are going to be, for this project, leveraging a lot of the relationships that we built through the Community Visioning Survey. So I can't guarantee that we'll have more success with the HOAs, but we will be reaching out to the same individuals, to the same contacts that we had at the schools, through the same community groups, and asking them to promote.
I'd like to expand your community group, I'd like to expand your community groups.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we can make those lists available for people to.
Okay.
So as far as direction goes, because I don't see any more hands up, I totally concur with Councilmember Howe. I think a statistically valid survey is critical when we're talking about this topic. I just, I wouldn't want it, the narrative, to be pivoted in one way or the other outside of actually understanding what it is our community needs and wants. I did have one question, because price was mentioned as far as that was going, I mean, that's such a fluid thing right now in this market. I'm just kind of curious as to the when, because obviously, we're sitting probably at the height of a market right now, and then there's kind of potentially a looming recession, which might suppress prices. So I was just kind of curious as to when you were going to pull that data point.
I'm happy to speak to that. We're fortunate that we have access to, so with many sources of data, including the census, the American Community Survey, not just the decennial census, there's quite a significant lag in when the data becomes available. So oftentimes, we're looking at, here in 2022, they just published the 2020 census data, right? Or in 2021, we were usually working with 2019 data. And that's just a challenge across all demographic and economic data. It's not limited to the Census Bureau. I say that as context, because we have data from both Redfin and Zillow that gets updated nearly in real time. I mean, it's not in real time, but the lag might be more like one month as opposed to two years. And so we can pull that early on in this project and feel like it's a pretty reliable indicator of where things are at now. And then we can also use various sort of analytical techniques, including just looking at trendline data from the past, to anticipate where it might be going, and to draw some implications or findings from those potential changes. In this case, if it's beneficial to the project to look at that data at a couple of different points in time, because this is a rather extended project timeline, as Lindsay said, you know, potentially 14 or 18 months through June of 2023, we could revisit it at some point and see what has materialized 10 months from now, 12 months from now, and then we benefit from the retrospective. So I would anticipate it'll be Q4, and I believe this accords with the grant requirements, when we'll be finalizing a draft, an initial draft of the Housing Action Plan, the strategic component. That might be a good time then to go back and look at that data, and we'd have the benefit of, you know, seven or eight additional months to sort of see if that's tracking with what our projections were.
Okay. And I think you answered my second question through the course of it, because you said you use Redfin and Zillow, which means you're using market value, not assessed value, which are very different figures.
That's correct. Yeah, for the purposes of housing affordability or commercial real estate market analysis, we would not be using assessed value.
Perfect. That's great. All right. Councilmember Lam?
So I'd like to see a statistically valid survey done, because I think we need to be able to rely on the conclusion of the survey. It's going to drive a lot of the decisions that we're going to be making in the future. It will likely shape, you know, town center decisions and land use decisions. I did have a question, is, can council actually review some of these questions before it gets put on the survey, particularly like the postcard?
I was going to defer to Lindsay or Kelly on that.
I was going to defer to Lindsay or Kelly on that one, unless you'd like me to take a stab.
Sorry, I was going for my unmute button with a delay of my mouse. I apologize for that. Yes, there is the potential opportunity for that. We would just need to find the time in the timeline for that to occur because those postcards would be going out, I believe, early summer, so.
Okay. I did have a second question is that, I guess it's more of a statement. I was looking at the presentation on page 96, and it says that resident survey statistically significant results was the goal, and there is a difference between statistically significant and statistically valid. It can be significant but not valid, and so I didn't know if that was just an oversight in the presentation, because I do know in the agenda bill it says valid.
Yes, that, the significant versus valid, you are correct, Councilmember Lamb. Elliot, I'm not sure if you need to clarify any of that further, but we could do a significantly or a statistically significant survey without it being statistically valid under our current contract and grant application.
That's correct. I think what we're aiming for, or what we're asking for direction on is whether or not we want to engage a research-focused subconsultant to ensure that we have a statistically valid method, which primarily would be a random sample and then a significant, or a sufficient, rather, too many S-words, number of results based on the adult population of Sammamish. And then in doing so, we could also determine which responses were statistically significant. But the ask here is, do we methodologically want a statistically valid survey?
Right. I understand that. I was just pointing out that on page 96, that the budget is $20,000, and you're asking for a statistically significant, and there's a difference that the copy, the written copy should say statistically valid. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, Councilmember Lamb.
I think just to clarify it and make it formal direction, I'll make a motion that we, I move that we do a, conduct an online statistically valid survey.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I don't feel the need to speak to the motion. I think we already went there. So relative to the motion, Councilmember Moran?
I had kind of a question about something that I'm hoping is going to be covered in your findings, and it's something that came up in a news story that I saw on Channel Five in the last week.
Councilmember Moran, are your comments relative to the motion or just general comments? We've got a motion on the floor. We needed to beat the motion.
You know, I can, I'll try to work it into how you phrase the motion, I guess.
Okay.
Give me a minute to see how I can do that.
I think we can still circle back for additional questions if we need to. I was just trying to clarify the study.
Yeah, this is a question that, something that I really want covered in the study, so.
Okay, this isn't, I think we can, we can hit your question about, because I think that would be a great thing to discuss as well. I think we just need to stay on whether or not we're doing a statistically valid survey. So are there any more questions relative to the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 6-0, we will do a statistically valid survey. Okay, Councilmember Moran, you have a question.
Okay, thank you. I thought we were going to be off of this topic, but, okay. So getting back to the question I had, this goes back to something I saw and was on King Five. I want to say it was on Saturday, but it could have been Friday. And one of the things that I saw had to do with the number of homes and small rent, small landlords that are disappearing at, you know, I think it was in Seattle, and they've lost over 30%. And I know we had a place that we had as a rental, and we've, we've sold it. I know a number of people that have sold theirs. Because of primarily, and that's what this guy just said it perfectly, was, you know what, we're not, the big landlords have got the money to do all of the, you know, all the new rules and all the new fees and all this other stuff. This blonde guy who's got just one little house, who's, who really just wants to be able to pick the perfect person who will be able to stay there for years, the new rules and guidelines doesn't allow you to do that very easily. And so I want to make sure when we're out there, we're looking, I want to make sure that we are looking at what is available, what we're losing, because if we're losing those because of rules and guidelines, I want to make sure that we're not going to do that, because we're hurting our own market. And I think that is a terrible mistake, because all we're going to do is cause rent to go way up. And so I don't know how we put that into the questions, but Seattle, for them to have lost a third of their homes that they had on the market for rentals, that's huge, and I don't want to make that mistake. So I just want to have an end questions somehow, and I don't know how to do that. But that's not my job.
Thank you, Councilmember Moran. That's certainly a great comment, and we can work with the team to see if there's a way to incorporate a potential question around that topic.
Perfect. Thank you.
So I don't have any more hands up unless council has any questions or comments. Kelly, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, as we're concluding the discussion, as a follow-up action, we will be bringing a contract amendment with CAI for the additional $20,000 to cover a statistically valid survey. So you'll see that probably on consent agenda here soon. Additionally, we'll be working with the city manager and city clerk to find a time to review the survey questions. Again, that's probably going to need to happen sooner than later so we can adhere to our grant timeline. And I just wanted to confirm that with the city council before we moved on in the agenda for tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. I think if it saves staff time on a consent, that $20,000 falls under the city manager's signing authority, and since the council voted, maybe that'll save you time from an agenda bill.
Because the original contract was over the signing authority, and the amendment that's, I think, need to come back to city council, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything further from staff on this topic, or you have what you need from us?
We do. Thank you, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you all. Okay, council, ask you if you would like a break?
Yes.
Okay. Now it's a yes. Okay. All right. So council, take a five-minute break, and we'll be back shortly. Okay, council, I think we're going to get started again here and dive into our next item, and this is item 16, which is related to the adoption of a revised Sammamish 2019, 2044 King County, county-wide planning policy growth target. And who is leading us in that? David Pyle?
Thank you, Mayor, David Pyle, Community Development. I'm here tonight with Miriam Leitner. Miriam will be providing a presentation. Then we will go into some question and answer with the council, and we do have a proposed resolution for you to consider tonight. Thank you. Miriam?
Okay. Hello again. Tonight, we are doing our final check-in regarding the city's proposed revised growth targets and asking for a formal decision through the approval of a resolution that we can take back to the King County interjurisdictional staff team and the Growth Management Planning When we last met, council voted for two for the middle range of market factor to be applied to the updated land capacity. This resulted in a proposed revised growth target of 2,007 residential units and 728 jobs for the 2019 to 2044 planning period. In April, staff shared the proposed growth targets with the King County interjurisdictional staff team, or IJT, and the Growth Management Planning Council, the GMPC. The IJT recommended that communication go out to the Cities and Towns Regional Geography Caucus members, so staff worked with King County to provide a memo for them that explained the remand, highlighted the work done to address it, and shared the proposed targets. As of right now, no other comments have been received by these groups. As you may remember, the remand requires the city to resolve the issue by June 1 of 2022. However, the GMPC is not meeting in June, so we'll be meeting with the IJT and the GMPC in July. Staff is asking that council consider the resolution outlining how we arrived at the revised growth targets and specifying what those targets are so that we can share that with the IJT and the GMPC for the final meetings. So at this point, I will open things up for questions and comments. Thank you.
If I could take a minute before turning it over, I did want to address some public comments received tonight that we've heard in the past. I have a bit of a statement prepared, and I wanted to make sure that I had an opportunity to read this into the record. Regarding public comment received tonight, I am not seeing any errors, just disagreement in method of measurement. I've explained this before to the council, although the commenter stands by their perspective and statement that there is an error. Really, at the end of the day, the city's growth target is the one that will pass with majority city council vote on motion. If it's too high, it will result in a failed vote. If it's too low, it will result in a failed vote. I could argue for a higher or lower growth target. I see both sides of the perspective. However, what matters is what the council is comfortable with. The commenter is but one voice in the community, and to their credit, they are passionate and inquisitive. What the commenter continues to ignore is that King County uses the State Office of Financial Management growth numbers to measure the city's achievement against the King County countywide planning policy growth targets. I've explained this numerous times in writing and through verbal presentation at city council meetings and in several different ways. The commenter wants us to use a different data source than what is prescribed by King County. The commenter's data source is not wrong, it's just different and employs a different method of calculating growth. The commenter wants this to be a black and white, precise measurement, which this cannot ever be, and that is frustrating for the city as well. The comments heard tonight should be directed to King County, as after all, it is a King County growth target that is set for the city as the growth target is foremost located in the King County countywide planning policies, and it is the King County growth target for the city that we then use in our comprehensive plan. So because this is a King County countywide planning policy growth target that we are measured against, we follow the method of measurement prescribed by King County, and we use Washington State Office of Financial Management data. But the commenter says the state's data is erroneous and wants to use something else. Given that we started at a, at a zero new units, or given that we started at zero new units when we started the growth target setting conversation in 2019, we've come a long way to 2,007 units. What we need from the council is a resolution setting our growth target for transmittal to King County that will pass with majority council vote and that won't be remanded back by King County again. We seem to be in the zone, so to speak, and the King County interjurisdictional team and the King County Growth Management Planning Council were complementary of the work we have done to get there. We could perpetually argue about the past, the nuances of data sources, the relevance of history, e.g., annexations in which government was in effect, the cultural differences in how data was collected and managed, if the data was properly entered at the point of capture, what technical system was used, what the purpose of the data collection was, and how the data was interpreted and by whom. No one is right or wrong. There are just many ways of measuring this topic, and King County happens to prescribe use of Washington State Office of Financial Management data that is different than what the commenter would like to see used. We could continue to debate the merits of different sources, although our time might be better spent focusing on what is the right growth target for the future of Sammamish as opposed to what did or did not happen in the past, and instead focus on what our zone capacity will actually hold or even what it should hold. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Appreciate that. Council, I will open it up to you. Okay, I don't have any hands, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. I move that we confirm the CPP growth target of 2,007 residential units and 728 jobs in response to the remand by GMPC.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I would like to speak to my motion. First, I think it was suggested that we hold on this, but I am keenly aware that our staff has a work plan that this council has set forth in motion for them, and I think it would be wise to be respectful of that work plan, both for staff as well as council and our residents. Second, I want to point out that a growth target is not necessarily what we will build. The city council nor the city of Sammamish is in the business of constructing dwelling units or producing jobs. That comes from the market. What our growth target does allow us to do is do the comprehensive plan, plan for what we believe will come into this city. If we believe that there will be 2,007 residential units constructed, then we will adequately plan for the infrastructure to which we are woefully underprepared for currently. To pick a lower growth target would amount to less infrastructure built in this city, and that is not what I think we should be doing. So this middle-of-the-road number is probably a fairly decent assessment of what will be constructed in the city regardless of what we do, because we do not build these units. The development community does. Our job is to plan for what we think they will build. Councilmember Trean?
Yeah, just, at this time, yeah, it seems like it is a fairly decent number to plan to, but I will not be supporting this motion because I believe that when we walk, send city staff into a negotiation, we need to start from a position, we could have started with a lower number. It was the motion that I made when this first came up. I still think it is the best motion, and so I won't be, I think we should have been with the 1,600. So I won't be supporting this at this time. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, Clark?
I think I am probably opposite of Councilmember Trean. I personally would like to see the number slightly higher. I think the next number is, what, 300 or 400 more total? I'm just struggling between, I guess, like you said, this is, this is a floor, not a ceiling, but that's my only struggle. And I know we didn't receive much feedback. I know I emailed you yesterday, David, but I was just wondering if there was any other feedback or anything else into this that you could kind of glean, you know? Is this the right number? And of course, like you, thank you for addressing the public comments, too, so.
So we have not heard further comment from members of King County staff, IJT, or GMPC. We did receive acknowledgement of the work that's gone into this. It's been a real heavy lift for staff. This is a very staff-intensive exercise. It's not one that we had anticipated having to redo. So here we are, taking time out of our work plan that we could be spending on other things talking about this, although it is important to get it right. So the, the issue here is, is related to, how does it relate to our land capacity analysis? And part of my statement tonight was, we could argue about what the growth target should be, but we really should be grounded in what our land capacity analysis is and what market factor we think might be applied in terms of rate of development or desirability of development related to land economics. If we were to experience a 10-year recession, that could significantly impair our measuring up against our targets, so to speak. So not wanting to set it too high, because there are reasons why you might not be able to achieve it, but at the same time, not wanting to set it too low, because as the mayor points out, then you're not building adequate infrastructure to support it. The good news is, is, is we get to do this again in eight years, unless they've changed that, that again. So we'll be revisiting this topic in eight years, where we will ramp up our, our land capacity analysis again, and we will also be then revisiting our growth targets. So it is something that we do on a periodic nature. The comp plan update process is, is on a 10-year cycle now, although I have not seen legislation that changes the relationship of the buildable lands analysis as of yet. So I'm not sure that, that that has been changed. It could be on a 10-year cycle. We'd have to wait and see what happens with the legislature, just so you're aware.
Okay, I don't see any more hands up. So relative to the motion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, I think that's a failed motion. I think that was two, three. Yes, we, we don't have Councilmember Lamb present at the moment, but she has an issue. Yes, we don't have Counselmember Lamb present at the moment, but she has an issue she needs to contend with, so. David, if the council can't confirm anything here this evening, what happens? The council's been given, the GMPC was given that initial number. If we can't agree on anything, or if we split votes on things, where are we left? Where are you left?
We're left in uncharted territory. So I really don't know where it would go. My assumption is, is that the council would want to reschedule this for further conversation, although looking at, our agendas are fairly full. So we don't have a lot of time to continue to spin on this. We do have bookends that are set by the county as part of the urban growth capacity study process. Miriam, I don't know if you could pull that slide back up that shows the range. This range is a result of our buildable lands analysis, our urban growth capacity study that integrates the King County prescribed range of market factor. So there is a high, medium, and low market factor, and King County, the process King County prescribes that you use is you identify your land capacity, and then you apply market factor. You could see here, with no market factor, we have 2,668 units based on the redo to add back the North Sewer Moratorium area. And if you were to apply a low market factor, that results in 2,300 units. If you apply a high market factor, that results in about 1,700 units. So the process prescribed by King County is that you land somewhere in that range, and to go higher then would mean that you are taking on comprehensive plan amendments for the future land use map, and you are possibly rezoning, or adjusting how we do bonus density units in the town center. So that really is the range. If you wanted to go to something outside of the range between 2,313 and 1,697, then that would result in us having to make an argument to King County as to why.
So counsel, I would entertain another motion, and I'll point out that the delta between all of these is roughly 300 dwelling units, and that probably doesn't actually equate to much of a difference in infrastructure one way or the other. Again, this is a planning effort, but I think we need to try and be able to do something here, so. But someone else has another motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to adopt resolution Exhibit 1 and confirm the revised 2044 countywide planning policy growth target position of 1,697 residential units and 500 jobs.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Counselmember Trean, do you want to speak to your motion?
No, I think we've said enough.
Okay, I don't see any other hands up. What I will say is that, again, the difference between these is not all that significant and probably won't change too much as to what infrastructure we put down. My only concern is, is if we go back to GMPC and our number has gone down from what we originally presented to them, do we know what could potentially happen? Could the county come back and give us a different target other than what we've stated here?
They would want to understand why we are choosing a higher market factor. What are the barriers that we foresee to development occurring that would cause land economics to tend towards not all of the available land being built out in the planning horizon?
So I think, you know, making comments here, counsel, would help advise staff in those subsequent conversations that they're going to have with King County's Growth Management Planning Council, and I think that will be critical for them and for us, frankly. Deputy Mayor Clark.
Sorry, I'm also struggling, because we don't have a voting member here as well. When is the planning commission session? Like, if we had to move this, would that be a good place to put it? The, sorry, planning commission interviews? Maybe I went off-topic of your motion.
Next Monday.
So we do have a motion on the floor, so we will have to vote on this. I recognize we are missing a council member right now, which is, I'm not sure. Carrie, if you want to comment on the missing council member, or if we can, you know, take a vote in her absence. I understand she's got some extenuating circumstances right now, which makes this fairly challenging.
So you do have a quorum, obviously, even with the council member not able to participate at the moment. You know, if you want to continue your discussion, vote on this one, see where that lands the council, and go from there. There is a motion before you on the table currently.
Yep. Well, counsel, I kind of struggle a little bit here. I think we are likely doing ourselves a disservice by going back to the county with a different number, but I likewise think we are doing ourselves a disservice to put staff in a position where they have nothing to take back to the county. And David, I would appreciate any insight you might have as to, you know, where we're leaving staff in this pickle, frankly.
So we really need to wrap this up, although not in such a timely manner that we couldn't defer action until another night. So if you wanted to reconvene as a council on, say, the 10th, and we were able to add this to the agenda at the end of the meeting, staff could be available to participate in that. I know I will always be available if you ever wanted to convene a meeting on this topic. So you could continue it until, I don't know if the 10th is, it's a workshop, study session, so I don't know.
It's where interviewing, I think, the planning commission members, so it's, yeah, it's just a...
Or the 17th even. The 17th would work as well.
So the mayor, if I could just clarify really quickly, the 9th is the planning commission interviews, the 10th is our study session, and then the 17th is our next business meeting. Now, to David's point, we could change the focus of the meeting on the 10th to make it a special meeting, to be able to vote if you, if the council so chose on, for this to bring back, or we could add it on to the 17th as an agenda item as well.
Okay. Well, so we have council members pivoting on both ends of the spectrum here on the growth targets. We'd originally agreed upon this middle market factor, and we have council members on either side going opposite of maybe where they originally voted. So we have a motion on the table. We need to vote on it. Is there any further discussion?
I have a question for Carrie. Carrie, so after we vote on this motion, is there an opportunity to come back and, can I bring a motion back for reconsideration?
Yes, certainly, the council can reconsider. You can bring back an entirely different motion.
Say, I'd like to change my vote and go back to the original motion.
If you voted aye, then we're on the affirmative side.
If I voted, as I voted against it, and I'd like to just...
If you voted against it and you were on the losing end, no, unless we split 3-3.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Counselmember Howe.
Friggin', ma'am, I'm trying to understand what, okay, as I understand it, we're voting on Counselmember Trean's number, is that correct?
Yes, highest market value. So that is 1,697 residential units, 500 jobs.
I will not be supporting that.
I have the deputy mayor asking me if she can go get Counselmember Lamb. I have a motion on the floor, and I need to follow procedure. Carrie, can you help guide me here? We have a motion on the floor. You can't make another motion until we vote on this one.
So I don't know if the council member is available to participate. That inquiry can be made, and then you can decide from there whether to call for the vote. But the vote on the motion on the table needs to happen.
Okay. We need to vote. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, nays have it. Motion fails.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Counselmember Moran.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the number that was given by staff, plus 25, whatever that number was, and I got to go back and look what the number was.
Sorry, are you talking about the 2,007 residential units?
Yes, so changing that number to 2,025.
And what about the jobs target?
Same.
Okay, so the motion on the table, which we don't have a second for at the moment, is 2,025 and 728. It would need a second to debate it. Second. Okay. Counselmember Moran, do you want to speak to your motion?
You know what? I think that it was a mistake to not move this forward, and the more I thought about it, I think that we've just got to get this to staff and want to move forward on it. The mistake was that, I agree it's too high, I agree with Kent that it shouldn't be there, but that argument we lost, unfortunately. It is where it's at, and we've got, we don't have a good argument outside of the fact that we don't like it, and we don't happen to think, it's not going to change what King County is going to do with it. We can't take that argument to King County. This has been years in the making that makes it unfair, not something that's happened in the last year. So, anyway, that's why I want to change it. I think we need to move forward this, and since I can't go with the original number and the original motion, I'm going with that.
Okay. Well, I appreciate Counselmember Moran's willingness to try and compromise so that we put ourselves in the best position possible, both for work plan purposes, but also for our staff. So if there are no further questions, we have Counselmember Lamb returning, so we'll let her get up to the dais very quickly before we take a vote, if she can. Just come on up. There's no cameras running up here, you're fine. So Counselmember Lamb, as you're coming up here, we had a motion for the original growth target of 2,007 and 728, which failed. We then had another motion for 1,697 and 500 jobs, which failed. We are now at 2,025 and 728 jobs, and I apologize that you've not had context for the rest of the conversation here. I don't know if staff wants to fill her in, or if we just vote. It's hard to take a vote when you haven't had context for the rest of the conversation.
Sure, we've been discussing the range that is provided through the urban growth capacity study. So what happens is, we study the city's land capacity based on our zoning and based on constraints, such as critical areas and other known constraints. That ends up resulting in a land capacity of 2,668 housing units and 1,543 jobs. Then we follow a range of prescribed market factors, which essentially is a resistance factor. It's whether or not you think that that entire capacity will be built out in the planning horizon. Will land economics get in the way? Will other cost assumptions or other barriers get in the way of that target being met, or that capacity being fulfilled? And King County provides a range, a prescribed range for us. You can see here, the lowest market factor results in 2,313, the highest market factor results in 1,697, the highest market factor being the biggest barrier to it being fulfilled. And King County says that you can go outside of that range, however, you have to provide reasonable justification for why you're doing so, and why you are deviating from what their consultant provided as the prescriptive range of market factor. So in this case, we have provided you three checkpoints in the range, high, medium, and low. You can choose anything between that range based on your perception or sense of what the market will bring. It is not something that is black and white. It is squishy, and it may feel uncomfortable, however, that is simply the way the process works. So we have in front of you a motion to do, for 2,007 units plus 25...
Yeah, it's, her motion was 2,025, if I'm not mistaken.
2,000, excuse me, 2,025 units and 728 jobs, and that is the motion that has been seconded and is up for consideration.
So just a few more things, Counselmember Lamb. These growth targets are floors, not ceilings, so you can always exceed them. David Pyle also explained that in another eight years, we'll revisit this number, and the idea behind a growth target is that it's not, we don't build houses, the development community does. We're using our growth target in order to plan for needed infrastructure. So if you go too high and you overbuild infrastructure based on a number, that can be a hindrance for taxpayer money. If you go too low, then you underbuild infrastructure and compound problems that already exist. So that was context. Do you have any questions, comments, before we vote?
Was there any discussion about delaying this vote until after the...
There was, and the discussion was relative to the work plan and the fact that we have a work plan and staff has obligations that we gave them through our work plan, so any delays we do pushes other things back, other things then don't necessarily happen. So that is the risk in pushing it back. It's always an option for council, but that was...
So I see this, this number is, I mean, it's a very critical number. I understand that this will delay work. I'd actually like to see how the Housing Action Plan affects this number. So I know there's a motion on the floor, or is...
There is a motion on the floor, so we'll be voting on it. Just one other thing, relative to the Housing Action Plan, we have to have this number adopted before that's going to be completed, because that won't be completed until next year. So we've got to do this by July is the drop-dead date. We were supposed to have it done in June, but there was no meeting in June for GMPC, so. Okay, if there are no more questions or comments, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Can this number be like a stand-in number? I mean, given that this number is going to go into the comp plan, the comp plan is not due until December of 2024, so can we choose a number now, whatever's, and then have it be contingent on the Housing Action Plan, and see how that informs the growth target numbers before it goes into the comp plan?
David Pyle is going to answer your question.
So the process is, we're already pretty far behind in the process. The King County, so this is a city growth target that is assigned by King County through adoption of King County countywide planning policy. The King County countywide planning policy is setting the region and the core city's growth targets, or I guess the county's growth, county cities' growth targets were adopted in December of 2020, or 2020, excuse me, 2021. So because there was an anomaly in our urban growth capacity study related to the Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District's North Sewer area, where there was a moratorium, and where there was a revision made to the infrastructure gap analysis that was done by the district, that identified that a large percentage of their land in their district area was not available for development due to sewer infrastructure constraints, we had to take that out, and we had a lower number as a result of our urban growth capacity study. What happened was, after we had transmitted our target of 700 units to King County, and King County Growth Management Planning Council wrapped up the review of the growth targets and approved the city's 700-unit growth target, it was transmitted to King County, and at the time of transmittal to King County, the Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District lifted the sewer moratorium because they reached agreement with King County related to infrastructure improvements that needed to be made to their system and the county's funding of those improvements. At that time, there were voices that lobbied the King County Council that the city's growth target was not acceptable because there was a change in information, and that the city should go back and re-review its urban growth capacity study to add back the area of the North Sewer Moratorium, the North Sewer Service Area Moratorium. That resulted in the King County Council remanding it back to the Growth Management Planning Council. The Growth Management Planning Council in turn remanded it back to the city for further review, setting a deadline of June, I can't remember the date in June, June of 2022. However, there was not actually a meeting scheduled with the Growth Management Planning Council in June, so that was deferred to the July Growth Management Planning Council meeting. The issue that we have is that we need to have a growth target put back into the countywide planning policies. So the process that was laid out, that we worked out with King County, was that we would come up with a preliminary target on motion by the council, which we did, which was the 2,007 units and 728 jobs, and then we would take that back to the GMPC and see if that was acceptable. The feedback we got from the GMPC... The feedback we got from the GMPC was that it is acceptable, and we are within the range expected, and that we should consider taking that to our council for final action. What we're looking for from council is to reaffirm that, or to change it if they see fit, and to pass motion to adopt resolution setting that as the city's growth target for reintegration back into the countywide planning policies. There's quite a number of steps to get this back into the countywide planning policies and formally adopted, so that we can then use it to initiate our comprehensive plan update, which is just on our doorstep here. So we really do need a growth target, because it really drives everything that we start doing related to our comprehensive plan. And also, we are currently left with a blank in the countywide planning policies that have already been adopted at the end of the, end of last year.
So David, I think one thing that we did not address for Councilmember Lamb in her absence during our discussion, was you addressed the public comment and the difference between the numbers. And I don't expect you to read your comment over again. But for Amy's, or Councilmember Lamb's purposes, could you just kind of capture why that information coming from public comment was not accurate?
Yeah, so the statement was that there are errors. There are not errors, there are just different ways of measuring. We've explained this several times to the council and to the public, in writing and in session verbally. The issue here is that the growth target is not, is the city's, but it really foremost is the county's growth target for the city. It is primarily set in the King County countywide planning policies. As a result of that, King County prescribes that the way we measure growth is using the Office of Financial Management data. That data is not wrong or erroneous, it's just different in how it's measured. There are all sorts of reasons why that data is different than what the commenter's data was that they were citing. It's not wrong, neither are right or wrong, they're just different. And the county, for purposes of urban growth planning, uses Office of Financial Management numbers, so that's what we are using. And the comment was, is that we got it wrong by 1,000 units. Well, we didn't get it wrong, just that the Office of Financial Management data that they come up with is 1,000 units off roughly from what the commenter's perception is of what the data point should be.
Thank you, David. Councilmember Howell.
Just speaking to the motion on the table, David, I realize you are feeling pressured to get this done right this second, but you did offer us an opportunity for an escape route for a few more days to ponder this, to get this right. And I, I know that I would feel more comfortable with that myself. Because I'm still trying to resolve in my head the 2,000, I mean, actually, I'm not totally uncomfortable with this number. I am trying to figure out how the town center fits into that number accurately. So that, I know that I'm still a little hung up, and I'm trying to work through it. Both Councilmember Lamb and I are going through some stuff right now. And so maybe I would appreciate the break and to have the opportunity to make sure that we're on target with these numbers.
Mary Ann.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, Councilmember Lamb, you had asked about how the Housing Action Plan could fit in and possible amendment of the comprehensive plan. And I just wanted to point out that King County, and I believe this state as well, are looking at affordable housing targets. And so that's something that's being considered separately from our growth targets, but I think there'll be some parallels. And there is also a process later on in the comprehensive plan update process, where they get the new OFM population projections, and they do another review of the population projections and how the comp plan fits into that. So I think there'll be some opportunities for reflection and some tweaking later on, but I don't, we're not able to adjust our growth target once it's set, from my understanding.
So I'm.
Oh, that's off. There you go.
So I'm not comfortable with setting the growth target at what it is, I think you mentioned 2025.
Yes.
Is that right? I, I'm looking at that number, and that's 20 years. And if it's, if we're just looking at affordable housing, that's 10 units per year that we'd be building in affordable housing at 10% of 100. And that is like embarrassingly low. I am thinking about the public comment that we had, which says that we are in population, the highest population of the cities and towns, and yet you were accepting 1/9th, I believe that was the number, 1/9th of the, of the units that the other cities and towns are accepting, but yet we're the largest city and town. So I, and I, I could, so if we can adjust the number, why not pick a higher number and then go work down? Like, why are we picking a low number and working and trying to work it up? Or regardless of what it is?
So council, I want to point out again, we don't build anything. The development community builds dwelling units. All we're doing is informing ourselves as to how we're going to plan. So we could set the growth target at 5,000. It doesn't mean 5,000 dwelling units will get built. It only means we're going to plan for 5,000 to come. So I think we're getting too hung up on numbers. That played out on social media, when, you know, somebody said, well, you know, we had, you know, council members supported 1,697, that they did 2,007, 300 dwelling units over 20 years. It's not a huge difference in how you plan. But again, we're not building any of those, not one. The development community will, and the free market will determine how and if they decide to come here and build. If there's a recession, we're not going to have a lot of building. And there is a lot of talk about a recession coming with interest rates spiking. So there is a very plausible reason that we should not go high, just because the number sounds good. We are doing this for planning purposes. So I would ask my city council members to please consider this number. We have moved up slightly from where we were. I think we're still fairly middle of the road, and I think that's a reasonable position for us to put ourselves in, given we don't have a crystal ball, and we don't know what the future market will look like. And while this is for 20 years, we're going to do this again in eight. So if we have miscalculated now, we can adjust for that later. So I am definitely in support of this. I think we need to get something done. I don't see another week changing the crystal ball in terms of the future and how we plan. So if there are no other comments, Councilmember Moran.
Just want to remind everybody that this is the floor. This is not how many we're going to build. This is that we're saying, this is the least amount we're going to build. So, you know, we need to stop looking at it as, what do you mean, that's all you're going to build? No. This is, we're saying, this is the least amount we're going to build. This is what we're going to at least plan for. So this is, you know, this is what we're saying we're definitely going to take. That doesn't mean this is what's going to happen, because it could be that we're getting double that. It could be, I mean, there's a lot of things that could happen. Or it could mean we go into a 10-year recession. I don't know what's going to happen. I don't have that crystal ball. So we need to look at it as, this is the bottom number, this is not the top number. And people need to keep that in mind.
I don't know if I could add one additional comment?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So in response to the other public comment we received regarding measurement against other cities regarding population, that conversation was played out pretty extensively as part of the caucus process. And King County did list out several different attributes that could be used to compare cities and to set sort of frameworks for different growth target discussions. One interesting thing that's, it's important to point out is that although we might have a higher population, and this played out through the caucus discussion, and this is ultimately what led the partner cities in the caucus group to accept and understand our position of 700 units, was that the city of Sammamish, if you were to compare Sammamish to say, a city like Yarra Point or Hunts Point, they actually have more accessibility to infrastructure than we do. So although we don't have, although we have a much higher current population, our actual status with regard to investment in infrastructure is much lower. You know, they're the recipients of a recent $400 million Eastside 520 highway improvement project, and they have elevators and lids and flyways and everything. We don't have anything. So that was one way that it could be also considered differently, that although population is one attribute to look at in comparing across, you could also look at attributes like the number of highways, the number of intersections, and number of jurisdictional boundaries you have to get across to get to a public estate highway. Things like the, the amount of investment necessary to achieve your sewer connectivity needed. Things like the amount of investment needed to provide adequate school capacity and accessibility to schools. Those were all data points that were considered, and that is the reason why we were put in the cities and towns category, and that is why the Cities and Towns Caucus agreed to the 700 units as part of the caucus growth target setting process.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Pyle.
Okay. Motion on the floor, Councilmember Howell.
Sorry, I'm just trying to understand another piece of this. And so this particular target for the infrastructure, I mean, do, don't have to plan for just the number that we had on the table, which was the 2,025. What is the lift in the infrastructure that we actually see? Would it be significantly different than what we have today? Is it a, I mean, what seems weird to me is to have a number and not have a plan that's assigned to it exactly, so that I understand what the, what the ramp is for this infrastructure? And what would it actually do? Because I feel like the Blum thing was actually, it's out of cycle somehow. Why was that done first? But I don't even, it. What? I understand we're delaying David and his team. What is, how bad, how bad is that? I don't have a, I don't know how bad that is. Is, can you work with just a number for now? And then, and then at what point is, is there something, well, I understand July is the final, the drop dead. What happens if you didn't have a number in July?
So I don't, I don't have an answer to that question. We're in uncharted territory. This is the first time I have seen a city have a blank entered into a countywide planning policy for a growth target. This is the first time I have seen a city have their growth target remanded by the King County Council Mobility and Environment Committee and the Growth Management Planning Council, back to the city for re-review of its urban growth capacity study. I don't know where this goes. We thought we had a plan set in place to bring this back to the council and work through it, and we're finding that in the moment we're in now, we're not possibly going to move along. I do understand the public comment received regarding taking on a new council member and possibly having that individual weigh in. I understand that perspective as well. What we ultimately need, and we can't have an interim number, we have to have a growth target number to work off of. We can't change the number in the middle of the comp plan process. And the way the process actually works is, the thing that you first and foremost consider when writing your comprehensive plan is what your growth target is. And you have contingency measures built in, so if you need to build more infrastructure, well, that's a contingency. Again, it's a, it's a floor that you're planning for, not a ceiling. You know you will receive this many units in that planning horizon, and you must provide adequate infrastructure during that planning horizon at a rate that's appropriate, under which you anticipate development will occur. So the starting point for the entire comp plan update is the growth target. So until we get that growth target set, we cannot effectively start our comp plan update. We can do background work, we can set up the platform for it. However, the issue here is that for it to get back into the King County countywide planning policy and to be formally adopted and effective, it still has to go from the city council here, through resolution, back to the inner jurisdictional team, back to the Growth Management Planning Council, from the Growth Management Planning Council to this King County Council, from the King County Council to the Mobility and Environment Committee, from the Mobility and Environment Committee back to the King County Council, and then it has to be adopted probably sometime in December, where it will take effect.
Deputy Mayor Clark.
Can I make an amendment? Where are we at?
Yes, you may.
Can I amend to 2,200 units, same amount of jobs?
I'd second that.
Okay, the amendment for 2,200 residential units and 728 jobs has been seconded, so any debate needs to be on that. Deputy Mayor Clark, did you want to speak to your motion?
In the interest of getting the staff a number, I'm trying to get somewhere in between.
I'll speak to the amendment. I think that's where the original motion was attempting to go. And I think frankly, I'm frustrated by this, because we had a majority of council, even with six of us, that agreed on this number of 2,007 and 728 jobs. And we sent our staff off to go to GMPC with those numbers. They did that, they've had those conversations, and now our council is backpedaling. And I think we're putting ourselves and our staff in a very strange space. So even if we come back with a lower number, or we come back with a higher number, we're still telling staff, well, you need to go explain that we couldn't agree up here, and so we're coming up with this number. Because why? I mean, where does 2,200 come from? Where does 2,025 come from? I just, I'm frankly frustrated. We had council consensus at 2,007 and 728, and we're splitting hairs over a couple hundred residential units over the span of 20 years. I'm frustrated. Okay, if there are no more comments, then we are voting on the amendment, which is 2,200 dwelling units and 728 jobs. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Okay, motion fails. Amendment fails, excuse me. We're back to the original motion, which is 2,025 and 728. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion fails. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. It feels like council's hit a bit of an impasse here, so I'd like to try to offer a path forward. We are happy to bring it back at one of the next couple of meetings. I think one of the things that we, from the staff perspective, would need from council is, what information do you need from us to be able to make your decision? I want to caveat this, and I'm going to, I'm going to go in a little more political than probably David is willing to go, about going back to King County and telling them that our council can't agree on what our number is. And we run the risk of at a certain point, having the county say, fine, we'll just pick it for you, congratulations. So I think that that might be a little coarse, if you will, but I think that at this point, as the only city that hasn't had their planning numbers rolled into the countywide planning policies, they're literally waiting for us to come forward with our number. So again, we are happy to accommodate council and come back at a later date. I recognize that folks are tired and there's outside stressors going on this evening. And so, but if we do, we would just need to know what you all need from us to be able to actually make a decision when we get there. So I would just offer that up for council's consideration.
I appreciate that, Mr. City Manager. Yes, I think there's a lot going on here, but I appreciate your candor relative to what the county may do to us. And with that, I'm going to make one last try here at trying to do something this evening. I'm going to go 2,100 residential units and 728 on the jobs. Okay, it's been seconded already. I don't think I need to speak to my motion. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Moran?
No, I think that's fair, between 22, well, 2,025 and 2,200, I think that's fair. And it's right in the middle. I think that's fair.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Councilmember Howell.
Could I just see the chart again, please?
I think if staff can pull up the low, medium, high.
The number again is?
2,100 on the residential units, 728 on jobs. The last motion was 2,200 residential, 728 on jobs. The last motion was 2,200 residential, 728 on jobs.
The left?
I think you cut out there, Councilmember Howe. Okay, all right. No more hands up. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of 5-1, we've got direction for you.
Thank you. I know that was a difficult conversation, and I appreciate the resolve.
Thank you. All right, council, next item. This is revising the rules of procedure for the city council. Carrie, I'm going to turn this one over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and council and community members. My name is Carrie Sand. I'm with the Ogden Murphy Wallace Law Firm. I'm serving as your interim city attorney. This is a follow-up to your April 19th discussion that was initially focused on interest in allowing remote participation in meetings, and then also wanting to fall in line with recent legislation amending the Open Public Meetings Act, specifically House Bill 1329. So I'm hoping this is a straightforward topic. I am available to review the proposed amendments in your packet and answer any questions that you may have. So the changes, like I said, are fairly narrow in scope. They're set forth in Attachment A, and they begin in your packet on page 129. In Section 3.2.5, Executive Sessions, there is a sentence added that states, "The announced purpose of the executive session shall be entered into the minutes of the meeting." And again, this is to comply with House Bill 1329. And so, it appears that this is already happening in the meeting minutes, but we just want to add it to the rules as a formality. So the next one is on page 130, Section 3.2.9, Meetings During a State of Emergency. Again, this House Bill 1329 allows remote meetings during a state of emergency, just as many cities, including Simamish, have done during the COVID-19 pandemic. This rule will allow the city to revert to remote meetings for future emergencies. Again, it's just a formalization consistent with the recent changes and updates to the OPMA. Next change starts at the very bottom of page 131 in your packet, and it relates to remote participation. Watch the video of the April 19th meeting and try to come up with language that I thought captured the discussion that I heard during the April 19th council meeting. This would provide limited reasons for remote participation to accommodate illness, vacation, and occasional work. And the proposed language is designed as a starting point for council's discussion. On page 133 of your packet, in Section 4.3.1 of your rules, Regular Meeting, Public Comment. I just wanted to confirm that no amendment is needed. Your rules, as they are written, comply with House Bill 1329 that requires an opportunity for public comment at or before every regular meeting at which final action is taken. So your rule already does accomplish that. I just wanted to point that out. And then last, on page 134 of your packet, under Rule 4.3.11, Reasonable Accommodation, House Bill 1329 now requires cities to provide remote oral comment opportunities for persons if they request it. So it does appear, based on your discussion during your April 19th meeting, that the city will maintain a hybrid meeting format going forward because we have the technological capability to do that. And this rule simply captures the fact that if council were to, for some reason, change to an all-person, in-person meeting format, the council would still need to provide an accommodation for remote comment by the public upon request. And that is a quick summary of these proposed rule changes.
Great, thank you. So we have several hands up. Deputy Mayor Clark.
Yeah, I'd like to move to approve the changes as written.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Deputy Mayor Clark, did you want to speak to your motion?
No, I think it's all good. It's clear. Thank you.
Okay. I'll make some comment. Actually, I'd like to make an amendment because 3.4.3, which is the reasons for remote participation, I would like to opt that options B and C, which are council members away due to a personal vacation or council member is away due to work or employment, should be limited to three times per year.
Second.
Okay, the amendment has been seconded. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 6-0, the amendment is approved. Now, we will move to the Bane motion as amended, which is adoption of these. Is there any further discussion? I have one point to discuss, and the question I have, Carrie, is whether it belongs in our council rules or not, and that was the issue that I brought up last time, which is when we have remote participation from members of the community. Other jurisdictions have had an issue with profane things, inappropriate backgrounds. And I think that we would likely be guided somewhat similar to the Reed v. Gilbert, which is, we cannot, if people could put whatever they wanted to on there, so we could end up with somebody with a Nazi flag, for example, as their background while giving public comment. And so, other jurisdictions have had a problem and have cut video. I don't know, it seems like video is a good thing, but if we can't limit what people have as a background, then I think it could become a problem. It obviously has not been a problem in Simamish, but it could be, and it has been in other jurisdictions, and they have stopped the videos from at all. So I don't know if that belongs in council rules or not, because if it does, then I'm going to make another amendment.
So, thank you for that comment and bringing that up again, Mayor Malchow. So based on some research that we did, I do think this falls in the First Amendment category. And so, like so many First Amendment things, it's really case by case. And so, I don't think that it would be possible to capture this as a blanket rule within the rules of procedure. If someone's background is so disruptive to the meeting because it's so inappropriate, whether it's pornography, inciting violence, whatever the case may be as far as a disruption, I do think the option to cut video and maintain audio is an option that the city could consider. But I think it would be very difficult to try to capture every possible scenario in your rules of procedure.
No, absolutely, which is why I think it would have to be an all or nothing. So it's either everyone's video can be on or no one's video is on. And it does seem like there's a section for public comment within the confines of our rules and procedures, and that's why I wondered if maybe it doesn't belong in here. And if cutting video is something we can do, should that be in our rules of procedure? Because otherwise, we may end up with an issue from the public if their video is cut and we leave audio on. And I don't even know if we have those capabilities to cut video and retain audio. We do. Okay, that's good. So then the question still becomes, is, does that live there? Because there is some reference within our council rules relative to... And I'm looking for it really quick.
I think it's in 4.3 on page 133 of your packet, Public Comment and Testimony.
There we go.
There are many subsections within 4.3. There's subsections 1 all the way through 11.
Okay.
And many topics are addressed in this 4.3, Public Comment and Testimony. It talks about the difference between public comment in a regular meeting and a study session, extending the public comment period, public comment time limit, grouping topics by category, multiple subjects responding to public comment, selection of response, identification of speakers, instruction for speakers, and then, of course, the one that you are considering adding, reasonable accommodation. Many of these rules are supposed to be administered, if you will, by the presiding officer, the mayor.
Yep.
And so, again, in my view, I think it falls within the discretion of the presiding officer. If someone is being disruptive, whether that's through use of their background, through their speech, through whatever is happening, that's something that you reserve the right to do as the presiding officer. You can gavel that conduct. You can...
I can gavel it, but I don't control video or audio.
Right, but I mean, as part of gavelling, you can say, "Cut the video." I think that that is an option that you have.
Okay.
And if you want it added to the rules, that's something I can bring back for future council consideration.
I think maybe something better, maybe just simply to add it to what is read here or is available on our packet, which is, you know, any background material that's obscene or inappropriate, video will be cut, just so that the public is aware. Don't even need to read it. There's the notes, the note sections that I don't typically read on there. It could be there, and that may solve the issue.
We can just say, "The presiding officer reserves the right to do that."
Yeah, okay.
Well, I see that as being really similar to the fact that we don't allow them to put up anything on the screen anymore for the very same reason as other cities, you know, because they had a problem with that in courts. And I see that as very similar to putting something behind them. So now, rather than being able to display up on the screen, people could put it just behind them, and it does the same thing. So rather than put that on to the presiding officer, which really is just kind of a bummer, because then they've got to be the tough guy. It just seems like we could put a sentence or two in the rules.
Well, I think if we put it, if you're okay with putting it here under verbal comment for a public comment...
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I think that's fine. I don't have an issue using a gavel if somebody's got something obscene on their background and asking Lita to cut the video.
Yeah, I think we should capture, because the other one's not in there either, but capture them both in a sentence.
In the council rules or on what's read?
Put them both in here. When you're capturing one, put them both in there. Because the other one's not in there either.
I'll defer to Carrie on that.
Was there a particular subsection within 4.3 that you thought this was most appropriate to land? I just, if I...
I don't see anything in there, in all fairness, that is of similar nature. I mean, we talk about notes in the public comment that's in the packet, available to the public, which says, "Please be courteous and respectful to all when making your public comments." And if you would like to submit visuals, i.e. photos or PowerPoints, please follow the instructions described under written comment, which is, we do require, right now, our, the general public, to provide any graphics in advance. The problem is, is we're now having graphics presented as a background. And while they're not inappropriate at this juncture, the opportunity for someone to make an inappropriate background exists. And they are not subscribing to this, which is, it has to be in by 5:00 PM to the city clerk's office, right? Mr. City Manager.
Just really quick, Mayor, we've hit 10 o'clock, and so...
Very good, yes.
Just...
Need a motion to extend, council?
I motion to extend till...
I would say 10:30. I would say 10:30.
I motion to extend till 10:30.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I'm assuming those hands are not relevant to the discussion on the motion at hand. Is that... Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
One, we are extended to 10:30.
So Mayor and council, I'd be happy to propose some language and bring it back. It can be a really quick topic. I just don't feel comfortable trying to draft that on the fly here tonight.
So we do have a motion on the floor. And from my vantage point, I think it's still reasonable to pass these. We can always amend them again if Carrie brings back some language, but that way we have these items in, according to House Bill 1329, as well as giving accommodations to council members that need to be remote. So, any further discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Yep, Councilmember Howe.
Thank you. There was, the three reasons for remote participation, is that for one year, four years?
Pardon? Sorry, I didn't hear the question?
The participation, council member can participate remotely for the following reasons, I get that. But is that for the one year? Is it for four years?
I heard that it was limited to three times per year.
Three times per year, for B and C.
Thank you.
Not A. Okay. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 6-0, the motion has passed. So we've got some amended council rules here, including the amendment there. And then, if Carrie wants to bring back something, we can reconsider that at a later time. Perfect. Okay. Item 18, One Washington Opioid Settlement Memorandum. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mike Sugg from the City Manager's Office is going to be presenting this one, so give him just a second here to hop on, and then he will take it from there. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, and Mr. Acting City Manager, Mike Sugg. Senior Director of Health for the City Manager's Office. And the purpose of this agenda item is to discuss whether council would like to sign on to the One Washington MOU. The full details of the MOU are covered in tonight's agenda bill, but I will briefly summarize it here and touch on a late-breaking development that occurred this afternoon, which may affect the MOU. So we'll start with a little background. Over the past several years, thousands of jurisdictions across the country have filed lawsuits against opioid companies claiming that their business practices have helped to fuel the deadly opioid crisis. And many of these lawsuits were actually consolidated into a single nationwide case that ultimately resulted in a $26 billion settlement. But Washington was one of four states that declined the deal and instead pursued their own litigation in hopes that they would receive a larger settlement on their own, as opposed to combined with all the other jurisdictions. So when the nationwide deal declined, both the state of Washington and the local governments in the state that filed suit continued their separate litigation against the opioid companies. And the local governments and the pharmaceutical companies have been in conversations about a potential settlement agreement. And in preparation for that settlement, the One Washington MOU was created, basically to outline how the funds will be allocated to cities and counties and to specify how the funds may be used. The pharmaceutical companies have conveyed that they want 100% of all local governments in the state to participate in this MOU, basically just to ensure that all claims against them are closed. And in turn, the participating jurisdictions benefit by receiving a piece of the pie. As I mentioned, among other terms, the MOU addresses how the settlement funds be allocated and what the money can be used for. So regarding the allocation side of things, Simamish is slated to receive about 0.022% of the funds. The actual dollar amount will depend on the amount of the settlement, as well as the number of jurisdictions that participate, with more jurisdictions potentially meaning less money for the city and less meaning the opposite. Staff estimate that the city could receive in the range of $25,000 to $75,000, depending on the amount of the settlement, which would likely be paid out over several years. For example, in that nationwide settlement I mentioned, that will be paid out over 18 years. So if we're talking about roughly $50,000 that the city is receiving, parceled out over that many years, it's not a large amount of money that we're talking about. Regarding how the funds can be used, the MOU outlines a broad range of opioid abatement strategies, such as treatment, support for people in recovery, education and training, among others. And staff have identified several organizations that could potentially receive the city's funds, with other potential options being pooling or sharing our funds with other participating jurisdictions, or providing the city's share to the county for use countywide. Now, as I mentioned earlier, both the state and local governments are separately pursuing litigation against the companies. And just this afternoon, news broke that the state has tentatively settled their suit for $518 million. And it appears that the settlement is contingent upon approval from the litigating local governments, which may mean that all claims in Washington, both state and local, could be consolidated under this one $518 million settlement that's been reached with the state. It's not completely clear at this time if that's the case, as we don't have the full details of the settlement. And additionally, we will need to confirm whether this One Washington MOU can still be utilized in its current form or if it will need to be revised based on the terms of the settlement with the state. So in other words, council, if they do, if council chooses to sign on to this MOU tonight, it would have to be with the understanding that the details may change, and we would have to come back to council at that point. But in any scenario, settlement with these companies will require that local governments collectively sign on, as it is the intent of the companies to avoid piecemeal settlements. They want to get it done all in one go. And so, staff, basically, we don't see any disadvantages to signing on to the MOU unless the city wants to initiate its own litigation, which would, of course, be very expensive and without the support of other jurisdictions. And therefore, staff's recommendation tonight is for the council to authorize the acting city manager to enter into the MOU. And with that, I'll stop talking and turn it back to the mayor for any discussion or questions.
Thanks, Mike. Counsel, any questions? Deputy Mayor Clark?
Yeah, I'd like to move to approve, or what are we, signing on to the MOU?
Enter into the MOU.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Deputy Mayor Clark, did you want to speak to your motion?
No.
Okay, is there any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 6-0, we will enter into that MOU. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, council.
Okay, council, our next item is the interim city manager employment agreement. Mike, I think that's you again. At least that's what I have under here.
All righty. Yes, so in front of you this evening is the agreement with Acting City Manager Scott McCall to become interim city manager. There have been negotiations going on between the county and Acting City Manager McCall to get this in place. So all that is needed tonight is council's approval if it is so wanting to do that. With that, I will turn back to the mayor.
Deputy Mayor Clark?
Yeah, I'd like to move to approve and sign Scott on as our interim.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Deputy Mayor Clark, did you want to speak to your motion?
No.
Council, any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 6-0, Scott McCall is now our interim city manager. Okay, council, next is council reports. I've submitted a written report there. I will just note, there was the Northland Mayor's Meeting today, which I did attend. Nothing earth-shuddering came out of that. It was just basically a round robin of what's going on in your city. Anyone else with a council report this evening? Deputy Mayor Clark? No, okay, no report. Any other reports, council? Okay, Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
I do, Mayor. I just have a short one, if that's all right.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I just wanted to remind that next Monday, we have the special meeting to appoint or to interview and select two candidates for the planning commission. So I just wanted to share that with the greater audience that may still be hanging with us at this late hour. I do want to note that I'd like to welcome our public back into the building. This is our first meeting back. It's been kind of nice to have the public in the room with all of us. And with that, also, out in the hallway, we have had an art exhibit up for the previous two, almost two and a half years. And so I just wanted to note that the Arts Commission is on it. They're going to return that beautiful art to their owners. It's going to be deinstalled on May 26. We're very excited to have a new exhibit installed in June called View of the Lake by Women Painters of Washington, and that will run through September. So I'd like to encourage anyone that wants to come in and check out the art exhibit. I would also note that we received an amazing gift from the tribe, the Snoqualmie Tribe. It is on display out in the lobby, and that is where it's going to stay. We are working on a plaque to go with to signify and describe what the...
Significance?
The art piece is. I can't quite think of the name for it, but that's going to go up soon. So we encourage the public to come in and take a look at that. It's a truly amazing gift from the Snoqualmie Tribe, and we're very grateful. I'd also like to note, just on a couple of events, that the farmers' market reopens tomorrow out on the City Hall Commons. And just wanted to note that the ribbon cutting is at 4:00 p.m., and they have some entertainment and some food vendors. So I'd like to encourage folks to come out to City Hall Plaza tomorrow and all the way through to September to participate in that. One other quick note is that our police chief is retiring here from Samamish at the end of the month. So we thank Chief Pingery for all of his work with us, and we will be selecting a new chief from the King County Sheriff's Office. So that process will be ongoing, and once we have an announcement, we will make that announcement public. And last piece is, we have an upcoming event. Now that things are kind of back going again, we have an upcoming event called, I'm going to, I want to get this right, Rigapalooza.
That's the one.
Which is going on on Saturday, May 21st, at the Samamish Commons. And my understanding is that we are partnering with a group that is doing a 6K run that morning ahead of Rigapalooza. So lots going on, starting into our spring and summer schedule. So I wanted to say a big thank you to our Parks Department for getting things back going and getting our community back together again now that it's hopefully safe to do so. So just wanted to give those notes and say that we're back.
Awesome.
And we're excited to get out and be with the public. So thank you.
Thank you. Council, anything else for the go-to-the-order? Mike, Sugg?
Yeah, I just had one, I just wanted to update council very briefly on the city manager recruitment RFP process, and then I had a question for you all. So you'll recall at your meeting on April 19th, you approved the release of an RFP to find a consultant for the city manager recruitment process. And that RFP went live last week, and it's now posted on the city's website, as well as the Bid Opportunities page on the State Office of Minority and Women's Business Enterprises. That RFP will close on May 12th, and then we will convene a panel to review any proposals that have come in. And that's what we wanted to ask council about this evening. So in a typical RFP process, the review panel is made up of anywhere from three to five interdepartmental staff. However, because this is such a council-driven process, we wanted to see whether there is interest in having, you know, one to three council members participate with staff to evaluate proposals, perform interviews of consultants if that's necessary, and then bring a recommended consultant contract back to the full council for approval. And as background, this is what the council did back in the 2018 recruitment process. And in that instance, council chose to have three members participate with staff on the review panel. So just wanted to pose the question to council tonight if council participation in that review process is desired.
Deputy Mayor Clark?
What about Mayor Malchow, Councilmember Moran, and Councilmember Lamb? Again, the three of you.
I'm good with that.
I'm fine. Councilmember Train? So yes, Mike, to answer your question.
Fantastic. Once the RFP closes, we'll make sure to work with the selected council members on the next steps.
Good thing we're adjourning. I have a tickle in my throat now. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Thanks for being here.